Paul?
Yeah.
You, since Benu's not here, you're going to need a secretary for the evening.
Oh, that's right. She's a secretary. Dorianne, would you like to be secretary?
No, thank you.
Katie, would you like to be secretary?
No.
I think the last one, last one that signs in is the secretary.
Okay, yeah, that's a good way to do it. Yep.
Good one, Katie. I like it.
I've been a secretary of too many organizations. Exactly. I'm treasurer on half of them.
Same here. Katie, since we're gonna start going to meetings, are you gonna wanna ride with me?
Uh, when it's dark, definitely.
Okay. All right.
Absolutely. And I'll help out with the gas.
Don't worry about it.
Well, I don't think Vera's gonna be the last person, although she could be, uh, she might. Vera, would you like to be secretary tonight?
Vera, I'd be thrilled.
Okay, very good.
We love you, Vera. See, I know.
Hopefully she's seated.
Oh, if I'm not.
I think you are. I think you will be seated.
Vera, have you heard from Roz lately?
I beg your pardon?
He's not doing well?
No, he withdrew from the Mansfield Lions, uh, since he can no longer participate because of his health.
We're live now.
Been pretty quiet, so I think it's... Problems are ongoing.
He just withdrew, uh, two weeks ago, I think. And he didn't do it, his wife did it.
What was that he withdrew from?
Mansfield Lions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he liked that organization a lot.
He liked us a lot.
He liked us a lot, too.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, John.
Hey, John.
Paul, I'm gonna start the recording, um, just so that when we hit 6:30, you're ready to go.
Better to start it early than to start it late.
Correct.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll give it another minute.
Mike Pamula, would you mind, um, turning off your, uh, video until we come up to you in the agenda? Thank you very much.
Hi, Marjorie. Would you mind turning off your camera and muting until we get to, uh, you guys?
She may not be hearing that.
Marjorie, can you hear us?
I can hear you. This is Ryan.
All right, um, we, we just asked Marjorie if she could turn off her, uh, her, her camera until we start, until we get to your agenda item.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Mr. Frogley, could you turn off your camera until we get to the agbotic, um, or I think I assume you're here for agbotic, um, until we get the agenda item? Thank you.
All right, so I think we got that straightened out. We can, uh, call to order the, uh, inland wetlands agency meeting of June 7th, 2021 at 6:31 PM. And Jennifer, could you do the roll call for us?
Linda's gonna do that.
Linda's gonna do it. Linda, yes.
I'm gonna do that. That's, this is Linda Painter, Director of Planning and Development. Uh, roll call, Acorcy.
Present.
Aho.
Here.
Chandy. Cooley.
Cooley is here.
Cotton.
Here.
Tony.
Here.
Paul. Plant.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
DeVivo.
Here.
Ward.
Present.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I do believe that, uh, you may seat both alternates DeVivo and Ward for absent members, Chandy and Paul.
Okay, very good. Everyone's seated this year. Uh, we have minutes from May 3rd.
Our move that we accept them is written.
Moved by Ward.
Plant seconds.
Second by Plant. All in favor. Okay, passed unanimously. There's some field trip notes in your packet, also Conservation Commission. Any, any questions for Jennifer about the monthly report?
Uh, Paul, before you go any further, are, do you need to name a secretary for the evening or not?
Oh, very, good point, good point. So, uh, so I name Vera Ward as secretary for tonight in replacing being of Chandy. So, any questions, uh, for monthly report? Okay, if not, we can move, yeah.
Just, just to note, the Conservation Commission minutes that you referenced, um, speak to the, uh, the application 1620, Mr. Pamula, 380 Wormwood Road.
So under all business, we have the, uh, application of Jay Preet for site development associated with the installation of six smart farm greenhouses, parking onsite septic system, and other associated buildings. For anyone listening in, uh, this is not the planning and zoning part of it. This is the inland wetlands. I don't wanna say only the inland wetlands. But this is the inland wetlands, uh, portion of the application. So, uh, with that, I'll open it up to any discussion about that inland wetlands application.
And, and Mr. Chair, just to note, um, there is no public hearing for this, um, inland wetlands agency.
Okay.
So this is just the, the applicants, they give a present, just a follow-up presentation, and then, um, the, uh, the agency can discuss the application.
Okay, okay, so we'll start with a presentation. All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because I am not getting any audio over my computer, and so I have phoned in as well.
Oh, good.
I am Attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent John and Donna Preet, who are the applicants for the wetlands license for the six agbotic greenhouses at 438 Browns Road. With me this evening are Mr. and Mrs. Preet, Ryan Chimaluski, the project manager and landscape architect from Weston and Sampson, and Joe Perugini, a professional engineer from Weston and Sampson. Wes Wentworth, our soil scientist, is also on the call. Last month, we presented the details of the proposed development in relation to the wetland resources and the upland review area in which the, uh, activity is confined. And Mr. Wentworth detailed his report. We have submitted updated plans as requested by the commission, and I would ask Mr. Chimaluski to discuss those with you at this, at this point. Thank you.
Hi, sorry about that. Um, my screen is flickering on my end.
We're just seeing a blank screen on this one.
Yeah, could you stop my share capability so it gets me out of the...
Yes.
Getting out from in here.
Uh, let's see. Uh, it's, I can dismiss you. Let's see, how do I, here, stop webcam? Is that too big?
Yeah, sorry about this. Okay, my screen is off now.
Okay. I just, I just, I just sent you a, oops, there's some feedback.
Yeah, the... Give me one second here.
Would you like me to share my plan?
Yeah, that'd be great. It's the latest set of site plans, and maybe I can walk through it. I'm getting complete, I might have to, uh, log off and log back in.
Okay, if, um, those people who are not speaking, mute yourself, because they're... And I will pull up the, uh, plans.
We have someone who called in that has an open mic. If you just called in, can you please give us your name?
Yeah, this is Judy Lavo calling, and unfortunately, I tried to log onto your site, and it says that the content's blocked and that I should contact the site owner. So I don't know that the online version is working.
Okay, we have, um, I'm gonna see if we can help you offline. Do you, what was your name again?
Judy Lavo, L-O-V-D-A-Y.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm gonna see if we can, um, mute you off, or we'll try and see if we can work with you offline, because we do have several people logged in, so...
That's okay, thank you.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's taking me just a minute. Um, sorry about that.
That's okay, and Judith, I'm going to, um, email you. Oh, did we lose her?
Okay, here we go. All right, we're gonna get, get here. Thanks for your patience, everyone, and... Okay, I have the plans up. Ryan, if you wanna just tell me which plant, which pages you'd like me to go to, I'm happy to hand over the presentation to you.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate it. Um, sorry for the technical difficulties here. I'm still getting a little bit of screen flicker on my end, but I could see the majority of the screen, which is helpful. Um, in general, just wanted to, um, touch base on where we've been since our previous meeting. Um, we've had, um, correspondence from planning and zoning, engineering, Eastern Highland Health District, and inland wetlands as well. And to date, we have, um, uh, met the requirements, um, um, in the plans. Uh, we made very minor updates to the grading plan, which was show the, uh, regulated activities. Um, there was a slight increase, um, for a couple of reasons. One is we accounted for the trench work along the driveway, the existing driveway for electrical utilities. And second, if you wanna go to the sediment erosion control plan, that's really the, um, uh...
Can you, is it, um, oh, sorry. Can you tell me which page, Ryan, because, uh, and I can...
The sediment erosion control plan is L600.
There we go.
Right, so this, this really reflects, um, the greatest change. We shifted the location of the temporary sediment trap in the top left corner, behind greenhouse five and six. And that was in response to, um, coordination with Eastern Highland Health District and the, uh, sanitary engineers, um, locating that temporary sediment trap outside of the proposed septic system, um, so as not to disturb the, the soils, um, and changing the drainage characteristics, um, of the soils. Um, if you wanna go into any further detail than that, uh, we have Joe Perugini with us tonight, um, but that really was the, um, uh, overall, um, increase in, in, um, upland area disturbance. Uh, also, you could see here, there's some phase lines that were introduced, so as the site's getting developed, Phase 1, um, and we have some language behind that. Um, our greenhouse one and two, the washback building and the office are all being instructed as part of Phase 1. The majority of the site work will be complete by the time those buildings go in, including, um, the stormwater management systems and, uh, septic systems as we would build, um, uh, in the ground and out, and then take care of ma- mass earthwork. If you go back to, um, page L400, that will just show the relationship of the, the regulated activity area. So really what the, the storyline is, is that there still is zero direct impact to the wetlands, um, and the site plan is responsive to, uh, comment received from all the previous, previously mentioned departments. So in the upper left-hand corner there, uh, you could see that bump out, uh, uh, where that sediment trap was, and we're essentially matching grades, um, uh, the existing grades out there when we restore that area. And along that stretch there, um, that's the stretch we were talking about, the utility trenching for electrical, um, along that whole entire length of the 150-foot upland review area, um, we have, um, s- um... Joe, you might wanna help me up, help me out with the language there, the, um, silt fence and straw waddles.
That's correct. Yeah, these are the same dual measures that we're employing all around the perimeter of the site. Um, whenever we're within the, um, upland review area, we double up those measures. Silk, silk fence backed with the straw waddles, or in this case, compost filter tubes, uh, similar type items.
So the difference between the last plans is that you're, you're slightly closer to the wetlands, still no direct impact, um, and then you've added, because it's slightly closer due to the, the movement or moving the temporary sediment trap, um, and then just a slight increase in work due to the trenching of, for the underground electric lines in the existing access road. Is that correct?
Correct. And we were, um, if you could see that gray hatch area, it's, um, conservative in terms of disturbance, because really we'd be trenching and backfilling in the same spot. But we just wanted to make sure for workability and, um, making sure we get a, get that dual sediment erosion control measures in there.
Right. Okay. I do have, um, a staff memo in, um, in your packet. Uh, the, the, I did, I wrote my staff memo on, uh, Friday. The distances that I indicated in, in my staff memo to wetlands are slightly off, but the spirit of what I was stating, um, in my memo is the same.
Mr. Chairman, uh, several departments have commented on the proposed development, as, uh, Mr. Chimaluski said. Uh, some perhaps more focused on the planning and zoning elements, but to the extent that Section 10.1 indicates that the commission may consider such commentary, I would simply summarize that. Thad King, the senatorian with Eastern Highlands Health District, has a memo that's in the wetlands file. It's dated June 4th, 2021, indicating his satisfaction with the subsurface sewage disposal, and, um, and goes beyond that. And, uh, there have been exchanges with the town engineer, who I see is on the call, but I believe that with respect to stormwater management and soil erosion and sediment control, that those issues have been addressed satisfactorily. And that seems also to, to have been the conclusion of the Conservation Commission, uh, as I read in Ms. Kaufman's report. So unless there are specific questions from the commission, we are respectfully requesting, uh, your affirmative consideration of this application.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, is there any discussion, uh, yes, Vera?
Oh, Dan, you just mentioned a staff memo. I don't see it in the listing, and I haven't seen it.
Uh, the staff memo, Vera, is, um, it's the third one from the bottom in the packet.
Oh, I overlooked it because it wasn't asterix.
Right, it was added on, before the, the packet was published, that's why.
Okay, I, I just missed it. Sorry. Um, can you tell me what you said?
Um, I think basically that, um, Derek has, from a, there's, I talked about the, um, the fact that there's no direct impact. Um, I reviewed their erosion and sedimentation. It's, it's, they've done a good job. They're gonna be following the 2002 erosion and sedimentation guidelines. Um, I discussed the Conservation Commission findings, um, and they found that they, they put it in their minutes that they did not believe that there would be a significant impact, um, to the wetlands. Um, I confirmed with Derek Delai, and he's reviewed the stormwater, um, from an engineering perspective. Spoke about what Thad did in terms of the septic design. Um, so there, there are just slight changes in terms of their, the total area of disturbance will be, um, 86,000 square feet, and the distances to wetlands will be slightly closer, um, 39 feet, and then for the, um, for the underground utilities, that will be a little bit closer. So, um, I feel like they've addressed things that we've asked them to, and, um, I didn't find any outstanding issues.
Good, thank you.
Uh, any questions, uh, any other questions from the commission, or any, anyone like to make a comment, any discussion? If not, there's a, uh, there's a motion in your packet? If someone'd like to put that forward? Okay, thank you very much.
No, it's not me, because I can't...
Oh, oh, I could, okay. Who, who was, who said?
Luann? Who was it?
Kent, go ahead, Kent.
He has to unmute himself.
Is that be able to hear?
Yep, we can hear you.
And Ron, I move to grant an inland wetlands license pursuant to the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Regulation for the Town of Mansfield, Jay Preet, for site development associated with the installation of six smart farm greenhouses and a septic system, um, and other associated building amenities on property located 438 Browns Road. Assessor's parcel ID 27 dot 55 dot 13. This is IWA file W1619, as shown on plans dated 2/25/2021. Revised through, uh, June 4, 2021, and as described in application submission. This action is based on finding that there will be no significant impact to the wetlands and watercourses, and is conditioned on the following provisions being met. The wetland agent must inspect the erosion and sedimentation controls prior to construction commencing, uh, and appropriate approach, excuse me, erosion and sedimentation controls, as shown on the plans, shall be in place prior to construction, uh, maintained during construction, and removed when disturbed areas are completely stabilized. This approval is valid through June 7, 2026. The applicant shall notify the wetlands agent before any work begins and shall be completed within one year. And the extension of the activity period shall come before this agency for further review and comment.
Moved by Ron. Is there a second?
Ward, second.
Second by Ward. Any discussion? Ain't none. Uh, do we do a roll? Um, uh, Linda, do we do a roll, uh, for a vote?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Acorcy?
Acorcy, aye.
Aho?
Aye.
Cooley?
Aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Plant?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
DeVivo?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Next, uh, next, uh, item of business is the application of, uh, MPMIA for site work, associated with placing the, the 80 wormwood...
80 Wormwood Hill Road. A very interesting parcel. Do we have, will we have a presentation on that?
Um, I, I can just kind of give you a summary. Basically, it, it's in my staff memo. As you saw, um, I had issued a notice of violation. Mr. Pamula came in for a zoning permit. Um, and he had said that he was going to be just replacing his structure on an existing foundation. There was going to be no excavation, deposition, or grading. We are getting some feedback from someone, so I don't know if we could shut, um, mute, I'm going to mute. Okay, so, um, I, when I went out to visit the site and issued the notice of violation, there had been some construction that, um, regarding the foundation that needed to occur. When they removed the existing structure, they determined that the foundation had been compromised. They needed to fix it. And so they had gone about doing some site disturbance. So I issued a stop work order and asked the applicant to immediately make sure that the site was stabilized. The site prior to them doing the disturbance had been surrounded by silk fence. There had been no evidence of any erosion or sedimentation into, um, I think it's called Newfen, Newfen Lake, or we, I call it Hanson's Pond. So, and then he was told to come in for a wetlands license, um, just to, to get the structure and, and fix the site. So that's what he has done. He's been compliant. I think the most important thing is for him just to get the work done and get that site stabilized and keep monitoring it. I have been working with him to monitor the site during, before heavy rain events and then after heavy rain events. So, um, I have, that's all, everything is outlined in my staff memo and, um, Mr. Paul is here to take any questions.
Okay, any questions? Uh, we have, we have a motion.
Um, I can share my screen.
Okay.
Oops. I think I saw a hand raise.
Yeah, this is Cooley. I'm happy to make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to grant inland wetlands license pursuant to the inland wetlands and watercourses regulations of the town of Mansfield to M. Pamula for site work associated with the replacement of an existing single family dwelling on 380 Wormwood Hill Road. Assessors parcel ID 18 dot 70 dot 6 on property owned by the estate of James Sullivan, care of Michael, Michelle Sullivan, and as shown on plans dated 4/25/2021, as described in application submissions. The action is based on a finding there will be no significant impact to the wetlands and watercourses and is conditioned on the following provisions being met. The applicant or his agents shall inspect the erosion and sedimentation controls on the site before any predicted rain event and immediately after any rain event greater than point two five inches to ensure that the erosion and sedimentation controls are in place. If the erosion and sedimentation controls have been compromised, they should be replaced immediately and the inland wetland agent notified. Appropriate erosion and sedimentation controls, as shown on the plans, shall be in place prior to construction, maintained during construction and removed when disturbed areas are completely stabilized. This approval is valid through June 7th, 2026. The applicant shall notify the inland wetlands agent before any work begins and all work shall be completed within one year. And the extension of the activity period shall come before this agency for further review and comment.
Moved by Cooley.
I'll second that motion and I'm impressed with the work that he's done and they've done in conjunction with our agent to, uh, it's a tricky spot, so.
Yeah, very tricky spot. Second by Ward. Any, any discussion? Um, we have to do a roll, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Of coursey?
Of coursey, aye.
Aho?
Aye.
Chan, Cooley, sorry.
Cooley, aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
For Tony? For Tony? Plant?
Aye.
Ron? Ron?
He's saying aye, but.
He's muted.
Yeah.
Trying to be careful. Aye.
DeVoe?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
And one last time for, for Tony.
I don't see her.
She is, yeah, her camera is not on. She's still logged into the meeting. We will mark her as not having voted on this item.
Okay. All right. So it passes.
Congratulations to Mr. Pamula who's, um, has a new baby, so.
Oh, yeah, congratulations. And, uh, what a great spot on that lake. Okay, uh, new business. We have some, uh, these are receiving, right? Receiving, uh, application of our cardinal for a single family dwelling. 149 155 Pleasant Valley Road. Someone want to put the reception motion forward?
I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, Vera.
I ward, move to receive the application of our, our cardinal for a single family dwelling, onsite septic system and drinking water well and a driveway with a wetland crossing on property located on the north side of Pleasant Valley Road, immediately east of 149 dash 155 Pleasant Valley Road. Assessors parcel ID 36 point 88 point 90. As shown on site plans dated 4/21 and revised through 5/25/21. And as described in application submissions and refer said application to staff and the conservation commission for review and comment. Because the activity involves direct impact to the wetlands and may involve a significant impact, a public hearing is scheduled for July 6th, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Moved by Ward.
Second by DeVoe.
Okay, second by DeVoe. Okay, yeah, so we need, do we have to do a roll call each time?
Yeah.
Even for our reception? Okay.
Of coursey?
Of coursey, aye.
Aho?
Aye.
Cooley?
Cooley, aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
For Tony?
Aye.
Plant?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
DeVoe?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, we have one more rece- uh, receipt motion for M. Rivera, Rivera on 4420 Bassett Bridge Road. And we have, you have a motion in your packet or it's on the screen.
This is Cooley. I can put this.
Okay, thank you.
I move to receive the application submitted by M. Rivera for driveway culvert improvements associated with a new single family dwelling on property located on the south side of Bassett's Bridge Road, immediately east of 420 Bassett's Bridge Road. Assessors parcel ID 30 dot 120 dot 4 dash 2, as shown on site plans dated 3/10/21 and as described in application submissions and to refer said application to staff and the conservation commission for review and comment.
Moved by Cooley.
I'll second, Ward.
Second by Ward. Uh, roll call.
Of coursey?
Aye.
Aho?
Aye.
Cooley?
Aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
For Tony?
Aye.
Plant?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
DeVoe?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Uh, passes unanimously. You have, there's communications from a permit application for pesticides in state waters. Is that, is that a lake, Jennifer? You're, you're muted. You're muted.
I believe it's a pond on Farmstead.
Pond, okay, all right, very good.
Uh, before you adjourn, um, we do need a field trip and I just wanted to put that on the calendar. I'm hoping we could do 3:30, um, on the 14th.
Okay, that works for me. John has his thumbs up. And had a pretty good time for people. Looks like it's okay.
Okay, we'll be in touch with an agenda.
Okay, thank you. So we're adjourned at 7:06 PM. Okay, shifting gears to, uh, planning zoning commission. I call to order the, uh, planning zoning commission meeting of June 7th, 2021 at 7:06 PM. And, um, Linda, if you could call the roll for us, please.
Of coursey?
Here.
Aho?
Here.
Candy? Cooley?
Cooley is here.
Cotton?
Here.
For Tony?
Here.
Hall? Plant?
There.
Ron?
Here.
DeVoe?
Here.
Ward? Ward?
Present.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I, I do believe, uh, with the absence of Commissioners Candy and Hall that you may seat both alternates DeVoe and Ward this evening. And as a reminder, you will also need to appoint an acting secretary.
Vera, could you be acting secretary tonight? Yes, she has agreed. Ward is acting secretary. Okay, so we have minutes, uh, we have minutes to approve.
Before you start, we, we have a few members of the public who have their cameras on. If you could please, uh, turn those off, uh, so until you're, you're called upon during the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, so we have minutes from May 17th.
For Tony, I'll make a motion to accept this presented.
Okay, moved by for Tony.
Plant, seconds.
Plant, second. Uh, I guess we got to do a roll call.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'd like to note that I watched the, uh, video for this meeting.
Okay.
Of coursey?
Aye.
Aho?
Aye.
Cooley?
Aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
For Tony?
Aye.
Hall, oops, whoops, no Hall. Plant?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
DeVoe?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes, uh, from May 17th pass. Uh, we have the special meeting minutes of June 2nd. And for the record, I listened to all three minutes of it. Congratulations, Ken, on the shortest meeting on record. We, we.
For 2021.
For 2021. Okay, so a motion to approve those minutes, all three minutes of the minutes.
Um, I move that we approve.
Second by DeVoe. Roll call.
Of coursey?
Aye.
Cooley, uh, Aho, sorry.
Aye.
Cooley?
Aye.
Cotton?
Aye.
For Tony?
Aye.
Plant?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
DeVoe?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay, so that, those minutes are approved and now we move on to the public hearing. And Ms. Painter, could you please provide an overview of the public hearing process for us?
I'd be happy to. Uh, as a reminder to all participants, including members and staff, please state your name before speaking. For those of you who are viewing at home on live stream or on channel 191, please understand that there is a one to two minute time lag due to transmission, transmission delays. If you will be providing verbal testimony during the public hearing, you can call into the meeting at any time. It will take a few minutes after the applicant's presentation to give people time to call in. The guidelines for the public hearings this evening. The purpose of tonight's hearings is to receive relevant information about the proposed applications from the public. Order and decorum shall be maintained at all times during the public hearings. The commission reserves the right to adjourn the hearing to another date and time if the discussion becomes unruly and unmanageable. Given the virtual format, we ask that everyone bear with us if we encounter any glitches. If we are unable to overcome technical issues and/or the commission is having difficulty understanding information presented in this format, the hearing will be continued to another meeting. The order of presentations this evening will be applicant and then public comment. Public comment will be taken in the following order. Support, opposition, and then undetermined or request for additional information. When addressing the commission, state your name and address and any party, group, or organization you represent, if any, for the record before beginning your comments. Limit your comments to the subject of the public hearing. Avoid repetition where possible. Summarize reports and letters that are, that were submitted to the commission rather than reading them aloud as all written information is copied and distributed to members. Direct all questions and comments to the chair. Do not attempt to engage in dialogue with members of the commission, staff, or any other parties to the hearing. Speak clearly to ensure your comments are audible to members of the public watching from home and are recorded. Commission members may ask questions of anyone providing testimony, but will not discuss the relative merits of the application until the hearing is closed. Failure to abide by these policies and procedures may result in a muting of your microphone or in dismissal from the hearing. Instructions on how to participate in the public hearing are listed on the agenda. For those who would like to call in, please call 1-872-240-3212 and use access code 5037448261. Again, that is telephone number one, I apologize, I just lost my place. 872-240-3212 and access code 503744261. If you encounter any problems calling into the hearing, please call 860-429-3330 and a staff member will assist you. Again, that's number 860-429-3330. Um, and we do have someone here who can assist you. I have heard from some folks that they've been having some difficulty this evening. It may be browsers. Uh, we did hear from one, uh, individual that it seemed to be a Safari issue. So if you're, if you're using Apple, that may be, or on a Mac, that may be one of the issues you're having. But please call us and we will do what we can to assist you to log in virtually. Uh, and if not, you can call in using those numbers.
Thank you, Linda. So the public hearing on the special permit application authorized an agbotic greenhouse project at 438 Browns Road. John and Donna Preet, applicants Enviro Enterprises LLC owner. PCC file 1370 is opened at 7:14 PM. Uh, so, uh, roll call.
Sorry about that. Of coursey?
Here.
Aho?
Here.
Cooley?
Here.
Cotton?
Here.
For Tony?
Here.
Hall? Plant?
There.
Ron? DeVoe?
Here.
Here.
Ward, and I'm sorry, I missed, I skipped over you, Ken.
Here.
Ward here.
Okay, um, next would be correspondence received. Have we had any correspondence received?
Sorry, Ken, or Paul, rather, trying to do too many things at once.
Multitasking.
Multitasking, yes. All right, so communications that you have received this evening are listed on your agenda. I will note for the record that we did receive several communications after the agenda was initially published. Those are all denoted. Everything that was new for receipt this evening is noted with a number four in parentheses. Anything that has an asterisk before that number four was new. So going through the agenda, as noted, the applicant did submit some additional information. And so you will see under applicant seminals, application forms and extensions, the, there's a transmission letter for supplemental information and plan updates. We have sightline profiles dated June 4, 2021. Updated regulatory drawings that are revised to June 4, 2021. A site lighting and photometric calculation dated June 4, 2021, and a water use chart by quarter for the Agbotic Zakkus Harbor location. And a citizens communication matrix dated June 4, 2021. Staff and other agency comments, you do have a report from myself dated June 5, 2021, as well as a report from Thad King with the Eastern Highlands Health District dated June 4, 2021. In terms of citizen communications, and again, the only ones I'm noting right now are those that were received after we published the initial agenda. Alan Frogley, June 6, 2021. Uh, the Donna Evan, June 4, 2021. John Leonard, June 4, 2021. John Leonard, June 7, 2021. Uh, Michael Stewart, or Martha Cutter, rather, June 7, 2021. Michael Stewart, June 7, 2021. Peggy Tucker, June 7, 2021. Ron Cotterill, and I will note, so for Mr. Cotterill, this, we did replace something at his request. So there is a June 5 communication that replaced what had been on the agenda when it was published, which was a June 4, 2021 public dash two item. Scott Lehman, June 7, 2021. And that is it for the updated communications.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
And as a note, this is a continued public hearing, so we are not reading the hearing notice again.
Okay, very good. Uh, so the floor is now open for the applicants to make their presentation if they wish tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I am Attorney Marjorie Shansky, representing John and Donna Preet, the applicants. And I'm here this evening with Ryan Chimaluski, the project manager and landscape architect from Weston and Sampson. Joe Perugini, professional engineer from Weston and Sampson. Rob Good, a certified professional hydrogeologist, whose hydrogeologic impact assessment is dated May 28, 2021, and is in the record. And we have also submitted a copy of Mr. Good's resume into the record. At the last meeting, you heard from Lisa Sloness, professional engineer, indeed, the traffic engineer from Weston and Sampson. Her report was dated April 26, 2021. And the town engineer in his memo dated May 10, 2021, concurred that the traffic had been evaluated by Ms. Sloness conservatively and that the impact of the proposed development is negligible. At the last meeting, you also heard from Matt Germain, professional engineer who discussed the subsurface sewage disposal system. And you received a memo, as Ms. Painter said, from Thad King with the Eastern Highlands Health District, including that the subsurface sewage disposal system and the potable water system items have been addressed. And I refer you to Mr. King's letter dated June 4, 2021 for the details. And finally, as also referenced in Ms. Painter's report, the fire marshal has confirmed by email dated Friday, June 4, that the site design includes an accessible roadway around the greenhouses for the fire apparatus, including Yukon Tower ladder trucks. So we have, and, and the comments from the town engineer regarding stormwater management and soil erosion and sediment control have yielded a, a call and response between the engineers from Weston and Sampson and himself. And I believe that we have reached equipoise on those issues. A couple of other items before I end the presentation over to Ryan Chimaluski. The first is that we read all of the letters that the commission has received and we catalog them in this matrix to which Ms. Painter referred. And that facilitated our verification, especially of items relevant to the special permit request that, that we have before the commission and that have all been addressed. We are confident that that is the case. And indeed, this evening, some of those items will be further addressed in Mr. Chimaluski's and Mr. Perugini's and indeed, Mr. Good's testimony. The second item is that the national diversity database request was filed by Weston and Sampson on March 8 or March 9 of this year, almost three months ago. And I assure the commission that we have repeatedly inquired about its status in an effort to get it into this meeting. And we have repeatedly been advised that they are swamped with requests up there. But, Mr. Chairman, we have stated previously, and I state to the commission this evening, that the applicant will comply with the recommendations of the NVDB when it is issued. And that should not inhibit our ability to continue forward on this path. The other item I'd like to mention as we embark on the public hearing is that we have stated unequivocally previously that there is no request and no interest in cultivating marijuana in the Agbotic greenhouses. And because the issue has emerged again in a letter or two, I state that now in a, in as declaratory a sentence as possible. It is simply not an element in this application. And, Mr. Chairman, with this, I request that we be given time after the public has spoken, which of course will be after we have spoken, but we wish an opportunity to address and rebut commentary and to summarize prior to the close of the public hearing. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Chimaluski.
Thanks, Marjorie. Good evening, commission. This is Ryan Chimaluski, landscape architect with Weston and Sampson. Marjorie, did, thank you for doing a great job summarizing the, all that has been completed to date. Um, just to reiterate some of the things that have, we've responded to. We've responded to all planning comments. Um, we provided a hydrogeologic impact assessment along with his, a resume of the hydrogeologist who is here tonight to provide a summary and additional water usage information. We've also responded to engineering comments. We've updated the stormwater report. We had correspondence with Eastern Highland Health District and have addressed all their comments pertaining to sanitary septic system as well as sufficient water supply for the intended use. Um, Marjorie has done a great job revising the statement of use to add content. And we've made the necessary site plan adjustments as well as provided some other clerical maps to the, for the submission package. The the nature of, that was the submission on May 28 to the town. The submission in June, June 5, the recent site plan changes. We received correspondence back from the various departments, including engineering. And we've, and planning, and we've addressed all of the comments in the site plans as stated in the memo from Linda Painter dated June 5, 2021. In addition to meeting the regulations and the intent for the special use permit, um, we've, we have provided the sightline profile information. Um, we provided manufacturer's photometric sheet for site lighting. Um, the, the site lighting, um, we provided the photometrics as well as went above and beyond and had the lighting manufacturer of the greenhouse lights produce a photometric plan that we have integrated into the site plan submission. Also showing no spill and that it meets the regulations. In respect to, um, traffic, as Attorney Shansky stated before, the, um, we have provide, in response to some of the comments, we have provided a sightline profile. I'm gonna, can I share a screen? I'm gonna pull up the site plans now. Okay, can you see that on my screen?
So far, it's just black. There we go. Okay. Um, as part Linda, I don't know if you can share, and I could direct you to the page. I'm getting the flickering again on my end. It's just not, unfortunately, it's just not cooperating tonight.
All right, Ryan, give me a few seconds to pull that up from the packet, hold on.
Yeah, sorry about that. I found the bit, I found the right button last time, but tonight it's just not, just not doing it for me.
While I'm, while I am pulling this up, we do understand from some of the folks in the chat that the issue appears to be at the hyperlinks from the meeting agenda to the virtual meeting are not functioning properly. Um, the address is correct, you can copy and paste it into your browser and that should work. Uh, we've also sent an email out to everyone we had communications from just in case there's anyone still out there looking to get in. And again, the phone number and the access code are also on there for anyone who is interested. And which page would you like me to go to, Ryan?
Um, the, I believe it's L300, I'm looking at my screen. Okay. So the, the one change we made in the site plans is the location of the driveway entrance in response to the sightline profile. Um, you can see it in the lower left-hand corner. Um, the initial traffic assessment recommended a certain distance and, um, we've shifted it over 100 feet. What this did was place a driveway, a couple of things. Um, it placed the driveway at the crest of a vertical curve. So your, your sightlines, um, met the regulations. Um, and the other thing it did was utilize the existing driveway that looped around the, the existing barn at the front of the property. Next is the sanitary sewer from the EHHD. Um, we met with, had phone conversations with Thad to provide clarity on the type of wash pack that would be occurring in the building. And in turn, he confirmed that our assumptions in our stormwater report were correct. Um, discharging water into this storm system. We've addressed lighting as well in terms of, um, the blackout shades horizontal at nine feet to stop, um, any uplighting or potential skyglow with also the ability to put in side curtains should there be an issue with side lighting. However, as you would be able to see from the photometric plan, um, the lighting doesn't spill further than 10 to 15 feet outside of the building. And based on the location of the building itself, um, that page, Linda, for everyone's certification.
Trying to find it now, Ryan.
Yeah, it's right there, it's right there. So just to explain this, this diagram a little bit. Um, photometric plans at large scales are sometimes cumbersome to get the data information to read. Um, if you look where the two parking lot lights are that are motion, set on motion detect, detection system, um, that rectangle of, or that grid of measurements is the, are the light values um, for the photometric analysis. We've also supplied the actual manufacturer's cut sheet, but we want to do this in relation to all the buildings as well. We actually went with the lowest level of lighting. Um, on the detail sheets, we adjusted the light fixtures um, to the recommended 3,000 Kelvin temperature as well as the lowest wattage fixtures as well. And still provide sufficient lighting for, um, uh, getting in and out of the building. Um, the, on the bottom left of the page is an enlargement of, with all the photometric calculations of the, um, of the lights of a single greenhouse. We provided that, so if you zoom in, you can see the actual data set. Um, with that, there, there are approximate contours you can see at different light levels. So we've taken those contours just for visual purposes and applied those to each of the six greenhouses in the page on the, um, in the site plan portion of the sheet. I don't know, want to zoom back to that? But, yeah, so that outer contour was less than, uh, that's like the .1 foot candle, just minimal spill, and then the next outside of that is essentially zero.
So Ryan, this is what you're referring to as the outer contour?
Correct, correct. So from edge of the greenhouse heading, projecting outward, that's the extent of the light throw.
Which is this blue, bluish-purple line?
Correct.
On each, around each of the greenhouses.
Correct, so if you look to the north. Correct. So if you look to the north, um, on greenhouse six, that's the um, closest location to a property line. And it falls within the con, uh, that contour falls within the um, with the fire truck safety loop around, around the development. So it's very minimal light spill. And it meets the, and it meets the regulation of no light spill onto an adjacent um, property. Additionally, on top of that, um, the applicant has been in coordination with UConn on odor. And that has been addressed in the, um, in text form within the site plan submission and resubmission. Um, and the use of charcoal filters, um, should odor be a problem, applicant is committed to um, installing those as part of the site approval. Um, we've addressed some lands, the interior landscaping. We re, we actually retracted the waiver request on that and we updated the landscaping plan to meet the regulation. We've added overall site circulation plan, um, um, which also in an overall site utility plan depicting the limit of underground electric and communication trenching. And I think I'm going to turn it over to um, Joe Perugini now to go through some of the stormwater um, stormwater features that have been um, slightly um, uh, not changed, but slightly modified to um, respond to engineering comments and, and satisfy all engineering comments. Joe?
Joe, this is Linda. Do you want to share your screen or do you want me to go to a different sheet?
Um, you can go to sheet twelve, I believe is the stormwater plan.
Well, that didn't work.
Well, for the record, uh, my name is Joe Perugini with Weston and Sampson, uh, Connecticut professional engineer. I'll be providing an update on the stormwater and erosion control updates uh, since the last presentation. And quite honestly, um, the changes that, that we've made won't quite honestly be visible on the plan, but I, I, I can certainly explain, um, you know, what has transpired since last presentation. We received comments from Derek Delai, Assistant Town Engineer. Um, as Ryan mentioned, we've addressed the track, traffic comments. There were also some stormwater comments. Uh, the system that you see on the plan uh, is essentially unchanged in terms of its location layout. Uh, there were some minor refinements um, that, that we did to address the comments. Um, none of which are um, more technical in nature. But I would say the, the biggest update was providing in our stormwater management report uh, an additional appendix which included a technical memorandum from one of our hydrogeologists. Um, and this was to provide a little more information on the groundwater that's anticipated um, that we're going to be lowering uh, through the use of curtain drains and underdrains. Um, you know, we, based on that information, we now have an understanding of the, the flow of the groundwater, the amount uh, needed to draw down the groundwater when there is seasonal high conditions uh, in the springtime. Um, and the reason for this is so that we are ensuring that the subgrade detention systems are able to fully function uh, in the event of a hundred-year design storm that, which may coincide with seasonal high groundwater conditions. On the previous plans, we had six-inch underdrains, but based on that information, we were able to reduce that to four-inch uh, perforated underdrains. And so that'll sufficiently draw down the groundwater and um, um, extend around the east and west sides of the development. And eventually they will outlet into the uh, preformed scour holes or plunge pools, if you will, that are coinciding with the main stormwater uh, drainage. Turning to review them and um, has indicated that they've been addressed. Um, in terms of erosion and sedimentation controls, um, we can probably jump over to that sheet L six hundred, I believe. That'll be the, I think the sheet seventeen on your set. There it is. Okay, um, essentially the, the sediment controls are the same except for the um, temporary sediment trap which extends along the north northeast end of the development. You see that long horizontal uh, basin. Um, that was moved uh, slightly to the north northwest. Um, and the reason for that is we wanted to make sure that it wasn't needing to be moved during construction and didn't, also didn't coincide with the footprint of the septic system as designed. So that was slightly adjusted. Um, over onto the right side of the page or the northeast side of the development.
I had to pause that briefly, Ryan, sorry.
Okay. Over on the right side of the development, um, where you see the access road extending to the east. Um, we've also extended the perimeter sediment controls. They consist of a, a double, double measures of silt fence backed with compost filter tubes. Um, we just extended it uh, parallel to the access road. Um, that is because we have uh, trenching for the um, electrical conduit that's going to be installed along the access road. But it does coincide within the upland review area of the wetlands, so uh, we, we, we are addressing that comment uh, to, to extend those measures uh, to the end of the upland review limit. Um, not shown on this plan, but um, we, we, there was a comment that um, we just were made aware of. We, it isn't reflected on the plans, but this is um, at the entrance driveway. Uh, there was a, a comment to provide a paved apron. Um, it's not reflected on the plan, but I am stating for the record that that will be um, installed and updated accordingly, uh, so we can make sure we address that comment as well. Um, I think the last item I'll speak upon is um, there was a requirement that's part of the, uh, give me a moment. Okay, um, it, in the section of the zoning regulations, um, as part of the filling, grading, excavation and removal of soil requirements, um, we had to provide a, a section of how we addressed um, those requirements. And there is one item that uh, we are requesting a waiver and this is uh, item H. Um, and this is the, the, the requirement that in order to protect the groundwater quality, uh, there, it requires that the development retain an undisturbed area of five feet thick above the maximum groundwater uh, elevation. Um, you know, we have always stated based on uh, inspections uh, and test pits that this project will encroach upon that seasonal high groundwater. So um, in order to uh, address this comment, uh, we are stating for the record that we are implementing best management practices in terms of temporary and permanent measures. Again, during construction and permanently after construction, uh, measures that will be in place as part of the sediment, erosion sedimentation control plan. And also uh, as part of the stormwater management system. Um, that these measures are in place to protect the groundwater from sediment and pollutants. Um, we are not able to provide this undisturbed area of five feet thick above the groundwater elevations. But uh, we are stating that we'll uh, again, implement these measures to um, um, assist with the, or, or ensure that we're not affecting the groundwater uh, for any type of future development. Um, so again, the, these measures are uh, both on the plans in the stormwater management report. Um, they have been reviewed. Um, these are best management practices that comply with both the Connecticut guidelines and the Connecticut Deep Stormwater Quality Manual for uh, sediment controls, again, permanent and temporary measures. I do want to mention that this project after local regulatory process has to go to the state. So there will be another level of um, regulatory permitting. It will be the Connecticut Deep Stormwater Discharge Permit. Uh, as part of that permit, we are going to produce a stormwater pollution control plan. That is a plan that memorializes everything you see on the plans. Everything is, that's part of the design that's included in the stormwater report. This is something that the contractor will have to abide by. And this gets reviewed by Connecticut Deep, but also is a, a, a live document that is to be adhered to during construction. Um, in that document, there are requirements for the stormwater uh, monitoring as, in terms of um, inspections that will occur. And these will be at the start of construction, midway through construction, at the end of construction. And then there will be routine um, inspections throughout. Um, and this is after um, significant rainfall. So uh, there will be a process by which the project and the erosion control measures are going to be inspected, reviewed and checked for their adherence to the plans. If anything is out of place, missing, uh, failing, um, it will be noted. And all these inspections uh, are to be provided to Connecticut Deep for um, and provided for their review. And, and it's something that's submitted or at their um, available to them to review. So again, there's this other layer of, of compliance that we have to make. So again, in, in, in summary, we are requesting a waiver of that requirement uh, to provide an undisturbed area of five feet thick above the maximum groundwater elevation. Um, at this point, I will pass the presentation along to our hydrogeologist, Rob Good.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Rob Good. I'm a hydrogeologist with Weston and Sampson. Um, you have my report from May twenty eighth and also my resume. Just briefly, I have forty years of professional experience conducting a geologic and hydrogeologic investigations, thirty-two years of working in Connecticut. I'm a licensed uh, professional geologist. I'm also a licensed environmental professional. And I sit on the board of examiners for licensed environmental professionals in Connecticut. Um, you have my reports. I won't, I won't go through it in a lot of detail. I'll try to touch on it briefly. Uh, we conducted a hydrogeologic impact assessment to evaluate the potential for the proposed irrigation withdrawal to impact neighboring wells. Um, the first thing we did was we looked at the irrigation demand. Uh, I think it's been reported in previous uh, testimony to be forty-five hundred gallons per day, maximum irrigation withdrawal. Uh, we looked at data which I think has been provided to the commission uh, from a similar operation by Agbonix uh, in Sackets Harbor. And that's a, that's an, that also has a six greenhouse complex to it, a very similarly sized. And that's on a public water feed, so we're able to look at water usage records from uh, usage invoices. And looking at a one-year period over twenty twenty, uh, those invoices indicate an average irrigation demand of about thirty-five hundred gallons per day with quarterly uh, average demands ranging from twenty-two hundred to forty-six hundred gallons per day. So I think that um, is good supporting documentation to the proposed forty-five hundred gallon per day uh, irrigation demand. We also looked at the, the process or, or the irrigation setting within the greenhouses to get a sense of its usage. And you know, as you expect with greenhouses, they're designed to minimize evaporative loss and promote certain higher humidity levels that also promote tran, uh, plant transpiration. So you know, by design, they're kind of uh, utilize conservation of irrigation water. Um, the systems, uh, the irrigation uses seed beds and a gantry-type mobile gantry system to apply irrigation water from overhead sprinklers that are positioned six to eight feet above the seed beds and targeted very precisely to the seed bed. So you minimize overspray and, and loss of irrigation water. There are sensors in the soil beds to monitor soil moisture and that's tied to the irrigation system. And the other thing that's important to this application is um, the use of storage tanks. Each greenhouse has a one thousand gallon storage tank dedicated to that greenhouse. And what that does is it provides kind of a, a, a link between a water source and the usage. And um, provides some flexibility in the frequency and duration of that water source. So it doesn't have to be continual operation. Um, we've looked at the hydrogeologic setting to get a sense of where, where the water supply for irrigation would come from. Um, as I'm sure you're familiar in, is most areas of Connecticut, uh, the superficial material is glacial till deposits, in this case, thin to thick till. In some places, uh, exposed bedrock. In other places, thicker accumulations of till and that's sediments that were deposited by glaciers, the bottoms of the glaciers. And comprised of unsorted clay through cobble-sized material. Typically, till is not a good uh, water source because of its low permeability and uh, thin saturated thickness. It's difficult to complete a well that can yield much water in till. The bedrock beneath the property is a medium-grained, uh, fine to medium-grained ice, which is a metamorphic rock. Um, and that's, that's not just below the property, but in the surrounding area, the bedrock is that, and nice. And that tends to be very compact and the water occurs in that bedrock along fractures and um, uh, fissures, bedding planes, remnant bedding planes in discreet um, channels. So looking at the hydrogeology, the water source for irrigation is, is going to need to be uh, the bedrock aquifer. And that's consistent with uh, the classification that the DEP uh, uses for groundwater uh, in the area. And apparently the um, the surrounding properties and uh, the well uses on the surrounding properties. We looked at a subset of well completion reports for six properties in the vicinity. Uh, four properties along Deerfield Lane, one to the south on Brown's Road and one to the west on Stafford Road. Those reports indicate, again, bedrock well yields ranging from about one point seven to twenty gallons per minute, averaging nine point six gallons per minute. The crux of a hydro impact assessment is the water budget analysis. And what we do there is, is we compare the recharge to the source aquifer, in this case, the bedrock to the irrigation withdrawal. And when that, we do that on an annualized basis, so we're not looking at a, a, a day or a week or a month. We're looking at recharge over the year and water use over the year because it, it can be cyclical. Um, and we've used this process over the years on hundreds of development applications to evaluate potential impact. And found it to be a very reliable predictor um, of impact. When the recharge exceeds the demand, you have a positive water balance and it, the indication that there won't be adverse impact. Conversely, when the demand exceeds the recharge, there is potential for impact. And um, And so in in this in this evaluation, we make it purposely conservative by limiting the recharge area to within the property boundary. In this case, there is contributing watershed outside of the property, about 46 acres, which will contribute water to the aquifer, but we discount that in the evaluation. We keep it strictly to within the property. We look at drought-conditioned recharge numbers. We look at normalized and drought numbers, and we compare to that drought number to make sure that we've we're being conservative and have the impact covered. And in this case specifically, we reduce the recharge potential for about 25 acres of the property, which are mapped as hydroic soils, which tend to have a lower infiltration rate. Accounting for the recharge and the recharge area and the variable recharge rates for till-covered bedrock, which are published, range anywhere under normal conditions from seven to eight and a half inches per year. In drought condition, five to six inches per year. We estimated that the recharge potential to the aquifer under normal conditions peaks out at about 65,000 gallons per day, and under drought conditions ranges from about 37,000 gallons, 37,000 gallons per day, to about 4,500, 45,000 gallons per day. When you compare that number to the proposed irrigation withdrawal of 4,500 gallons per day, you end up with a significantly positive water budget for this site. So in in our opinion, for a number of factors, we we conclude that the proposed development in irrigation withdrawal will not have adverse impact to the surrounding wells. And just briefly touching on the key points, the substantiated water usage, which is well documented from an existing operation, the efficiencies that this irrigation system uses, we got automation, application, the hydrogeologic setting, which you have relatively large tracts of land that are undeveloped, that will produce adequate recharge to the bedrock aquifer, the well records that we looked at, which indicate that the aquifer, that a well could be completed in the bedrock aquifer that would be sufficient to meet the demand, the relatively large size of the property and proximity to neighboring wells, such that an irrigation well could be positioned on the subject property that would be 1,000 to 1,500 feet away from the nearest well, and the significantly positive water budget, even in a drought condition at that 37,000 gallons per day compared to a water demand of 4,500 gallons per day. So to me, that all points to that the bedrock aquifer should support the irrigation without adverse impacts. And that's that's a summary of the document that I submitted. Happy to answer questions when that time comes. And I'm not sure who I'm passing to.
Marjorie, I believe you're up.
You're muted, Marjorie.
Thank you. I beg your pardon. In that event, Mr. Chairman, we would like to have the questions of the commission and the testimony of the public, and then return for rebuttal and summation.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
So let's so let's the next step is the questions that the commission might have of the applicants. I'll start off with a question. I have a question about the blackout shades. So as I understand it, the the lighting inside the greenhouse will end at what would be the longest day of the year, June 21st, at nine o'clock at night or so. So the so if we're talking about December 21st, when the sun goes down at 4:30, the blackout shades would operate from 4:30 to nine? And then all the lights would be off from nine to five in the morning, and then lights would come on at five, but with blackout curtains? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you are, Chairman. This is John and Donna Preet.
Okay, so so in the winter, when when it's dark outside, in that time period that would be like June 21st, that's when the blackout curtains will will operate.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Linda Painter. Just to add on to that, John, can you address the types of shades? One of the things I noted in my report was that the example you gave is will block out, essentially cover the ceiling, so any light going up but does not necessarily address the sides of the greenhouse?
Yes, exactly, Linda. The the shade manufacturer is a Swedish company. They they do this type of horizontal blackout shades all over the world. Most of the commission knows Netherlands is a foremost. But even in Canada and other countries, this sort of regulation for for stopping any sort of sky glow is becoming the norm. So their particular design calls for, again, virtually totally blackout shade that would be horizontal. So if I was just give you kind of an example, so you have the bed of soil, approximately eight feet from that soil will be the lights, and about a foot above the lights would be the horizontal shades, much like the vertical shades that you use in your in your windows. So at the time that the lights would be energized, would be a time that it would be typically dark, and the automation would be such that the shades would be in place prior to those lights going on. So that would stop any upward glow. As Ryan illustrated with some of the semitals that we put forward, the horizontal actually trails off about 15-foot perimeter around the particular greenhouses themselves, so those will not be visible. On on unlikely event that there's any visibility, we can always put a a wall shade or paint, in the case of the north side, we'll just paint it black. There will be no spillage on the horizontal or what I would call the wall the wall side as well.
Thank you, John. And I did note for in your packet for the commission members, there was correspondence from the manufacturer noting that they do offer a wall shade option, just because I wasn't sure from the specifications as to what it covered.
Any other questions from the commission? Vera.
A couple of questions. I was just interested that you changed your, um, where did I make my notes? You changed your under drains, your perforated under drains from six inch to four inch. That's going smaller. I just wondered why. We had five inches of rain here just the other day. So, you know, I know the area, and I know there's going to be a lot of, there can be a lot of stormwater and whatever. I just wondered why why that was okay to do from six to four inches, making it smaller.
Sure. To answer your question, at the time, the last time these plans were submitted, we had six inch as a placeholder, and to be conservative until we had a hydrogeologist evaluate the groundwater. Since that time, it was evaluated based on the test pits, PERC tests, and an evaluation of the the soils themselves and the surrounding area. This is based on the the movement of groundwater through that soil, and I was even surprised at how how low the the flow, the groundwater flow was. As was mentioned earlier, you know, this till material, it it results in a very slow movement of groundwater. So when that when I was provided with that information, it was provided in the stormwater report, it wasn't, even with a four inch, it's more than adequate to handle and draw down the groundwater. It's a it's a bit different than surface runoff, you know, that that we see, you know, movement of surface runoff and and large quantities, but the groundwater flow is is very low, and it wasn't necessary to have go at the six inch. Now, that groundwater flow is going to be in a northerly direction, you know, following the topography, moving its way towards the wetlands. So we have curtain drains and under drains along that southern side of the development and below that first series of subgrade detention. And my understanding, you know, in talking with the hydrogeologists, that will sufficiently lower the groundwater, and we will not need the under drains, even though we we are proposing them, we are keeping them in place. The other under drains that are under the next sequence of subgrade detention systems, they will likely not see any groundwater flow through them because everything that's on the leading edge or the southern part of the development will draw it down and bring it around the development and outlet it. So that will also help eliminate the need for footing drains because these are going to be lower than the footings of the buildings. But yeah, based on the flows that we were getting, you know, these are very tight soils and and not, there was no reason to to keep it as a six-inch perforated drains, and and finding out that four inch was more than adequate.
Okay, that's good. That's you're either feast or famine here. On the bedrock aquifer, if I were a surrounding property owner, and there are several that said their wells went dry in August, I would be concerned about increased shortages because of your usage. Does that make sense? How how can that be evaded that they don't lose more than they already do? Are their wells not deep enough? Is that the problem?
For the record, Rob Good, no, it 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 may not be that the well depth, it may be that they're not very well connected to the aquifer as one possible reason. As as we discussed, the these are bedrock wells, and the water conveyance in bedrock is along fractures and fissures. So depending on the number of those that are intercepted by the well, that will correspond to the well yield, more fractures, higher yield, less fractures, lower yield. Impacts the well, seasonal impacts during dry conditions, and result from where those fractures are located in the borehole. If they're shallow, they can be more susceptible to impact by lowered seasonal water table. But the reason that we do this hydro impact assessment is to is to kind of evaluate that. And in this case, because of the 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 setting, the location of of wells, the separation distances, you know, we just don't end the relatively low demand for the irrigation system due to the high efficiency of the greenhouse operations, there we just don't believe there's potential for impact for those reasons. You know, the other thing that can affect residential wells that are maybe on smaller properties in close proximity to each other, you know, that seasonal withdrawal of those tighter locations can kind of affect themselves. Another anecdotal piece of evidence relative to bedrock impacts and low yields, when the DEP looks at wellhead protection measures for bedrock wells, they look at a radius of 500 feet. So their concern of a release or potential contamination to a well happens within 500 feet because they consider that a potential area of influence. Our well is going to be three or four times further from those from residential wells, you know, on the order of 1,000 to 1,500 feet separation. So that's all to say that we don't believe there will be impact.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Attorney Shansky. That's Commissioner Ward's first question was answered by Mr. Perugini, Weston and Sampson, for the record. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're getting some feedback.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, now it stopped. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Vera.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. We haven't talked about your crops recently. I see in your statement of use, you have listed, are those going to be the only crops? Or can you do you feel you can add and change without without any clearance? And you talk about industrial hemp virtually odorless. But that wasn't the conversation that was had earlier, that they thought that that wasn't the case. So could you just talk about your crops and what you plan to do?
Sure, Commissioner Ward, this is John Preet. The list that we have in our statement of use is the crops that we presently grow that that have a tremendous commercial appetite. So those are the ones that the various retail outlets want us to grow. Our ability to grow things like herbs, basil, thyme, things of that nature is very doable. We believe we'll get into that mix as well. And as far as the industrial hemp, that has always been the particular plant that has caused a lot of folks to to be concerned, and rightfully so. The industrial hemp is the cannabis, unlike marijuana, which is a cannabis. We use a mixed seed. We use it primarily for beverages, and we grow it in greenhouses alongside a Tulsi or ginger, and that becomes a beverage, at least in New York. It is odorless. I was in that greenhouse many, many times during a 90-day period. But in consultation with UConn, they they said that if there's an odor, they have explored a charcoal filter that goes on the exhaust fan, and we're more than happy to do that. That's not something that we're interested. We're not here to be a neighbor that produces an odor that that really inhibits a neighbor. So we made that claim, and I I'm here in front of you making it again verbally.
Go ahead, Vera.
And so you would monitor that, would you?
Absolutely.
Is it is it your intention? I think at some point you said that the industrial hemp would be a small portion of the greenhouses. Is that is it your intention for that to continue being a small portion of the total production?
Absolutely.
And when when you say small, would that be like one part of one greenhouse? Or what what how how do you define small?
It'd be about two rows per one greenhouse, and we don't envision any more than two greenhouses.
Okay.
So within that, Commissioner Aho, we would grow various complementary plants. We have a 50-foot across, and there's 10, 10-foot, 10 times five, so five-foot rows times 10. So two of the rows may have hemp, may not, but that's all it would be.
Mr. Chairman, Marjorie Shansky, this has covered paragraph number nine in the statement of use on page four. Industrial hemp not grown in in all greenhouses, likely limited to one or two, and in the range of one row per 10 rows of other field crops. So that is stated.
Okay, thank you.
Where where is that? I'm sorry.
Marjorie Shansky, it's on page four of the statement of use at paragraph nine discussing odor.
I guess I'm looking at a wrong page four. Okay, I'll have to look.
Yeah, this is Linda. This is in their most updated statement of use. I think.
Well, I've got the original. Never mind. I'll look for that.
Mr. Chair, I did want to note for the record that Derek Delai, Assistant Town Engineer, is also present this evening, so if commission members have any question for staff, you can also ask them at this time.
Any other questions for anybody?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Linda.
I'd like to direct this towards the town engineer. In one of the statements that was provided by one of the residents, and they noted that they've had communication with the town about the speed that people travel on Brown's Road and and that being a problem. Is it possible to have that road evaluated for speed of travel? And if so, And if so, get additional signage that would help control that?
We were fortunate to receive a federal grant actually in the last week that will provide some reinforcing signage such that it'll basically provide real time feedback, what people's speeds are as they're traveling. And that is one of the roadways that we want to at least try to get a hold on. That's also the reason why we had the discussion with the applicant to review that intersection site distance to the longer length because we do see those increased speeds.
Very good, thank you.
Katie?
My question is also for Derek. Is because one concern was the size of the vehicles, the trucks that would be on this road. And where it's a semi residential area and that. Can we get signage that, or can we get a ruling that we would limit the limit the tonnage of the truck that's going on? So you would not have big semis, but you would have box trucks?
So usually weights are dictated by federal highway. So it's not something we could really do at a town level. And it would be referred back to OSTA, which really reviews all speed limits, et cetera. And probably dictates what we can do on our roadways to some extent, especially because we do receive some state dollars that allow us to do a lot of the maintenance that we do do. So we have to follow those regulations. But to your point about the size of the vehicles. We did, we do always, whenever we do our speed studies and data collection, we do look at the size of the vehicles, what classifications they are. And we saw, you know, there are a handful of larger trucks. One area that surprised me in town, not in this direct vicinity, was semi trucks using Gurleyville Road in its intersection with Codfish. I was very surprised by that. I did not expect that. But we did see, you know, probably a good dozen tractor trailer trucks utilizing that roadway. So it is surprising that we do see larger vehicles traverse our roadways. It is something we have to look at as we, you know, implement any kind of turning radii changes, et cetera. And why certain roads have larger turning radii, we really don't want them. But because of the types of trucks we do have, we do have to accommodate those.
Okay, thank you.
Dorian.
So you're saying that we can't prevent semi trucks from going?
That is correct. I mean, ultimately, semi trucks make money based on deliveries. So ultimately, they're going to take the fastest route, which is 99.9% of the time is a state highway. There was some construction going on in Gurleyville in that time period, or we did see some building permits. We also saw some, you know, foundation replacements. We're not sure if it was maybe related to that. So, but there isn't something we can prohibit those vehicles from using our roadways. But typically, you know, they aren't normally used.
I would be very concerned about traffic wise for this.
Paul, this is Linda. I think Derek is talking specifically about the roadways. We cannot prohibit certain types of vehicles or weights on our roadways. I think what Dorian may be getting to is whether or not as a condition of the special permit, can you, can you limit the types of vehicles that are used to do pickups and deliveries on this site? And, you know, I think the applicant has indicated, and I'll let them speak to this, that they are proposing to use box trucks and other types of vehicles. You know, we do have, I was just trying to look through the, you know, the examples we give of conditions that you can apply to a special permit. One of which is limitations of size, number of occupants, methods, or time of operation, or extent of facilities. You know, this may be a question ultimately for the town attorney as part of, you know, any kind of discussion. But I think, I think that's kind of the difference in terms of we can't prevent these trucks from using our roads. But I think what I understood from Katie and Dorian was can you, as the commission in approving this project, place limits on the types of vehicles that the business itself is using? And Dorian is nodding that that's the understanding that I'm correct in them understanding, so.
So in addition to the box trucks. Is it proposed that semis be used at any time? Or would they be rarely used? Or how often would semi tractor trailer trucks be used?
Chairman, John Preet, Donna Preet. A semi, I believe we have in the record, would be used maybe once or twice a month. And that would be for a delivery of what we call our amendments. Things that prompt up our organic soil. Right now, as I visited the farm many times, there has been semis in and out of that property often. And that is not, that is not what I wish to do. That is not what we're proposing to do. We'll keep the delivery trucks to these box truck oriented, prime van oriented trucks. And of course, vehicles for the employees. I wish I could give you an absolute of the semi. I just don't know if I can restrict permanently a semi going, coming in just to deliver like they do to many farms, you know, bulk material like that. But rarely, I think, is indeed very doable.
Okay. Yes, Vera?
Derek, just a note in general, are there any plans to repave that road?
Yes, there are.
Because that would be a service to the people that live on it, I would think, as well as other traffic. Also, I really think your speed signs are, I question how that solves the problem. Because I know it's not an arterial road, but it's a connector road. And it just, it's heavily traveled and also fast driving. So if you ticketed a few people, it might calm things down.
We'll definitely refer that to our sergeant.
Any other questions? Okay, if not. The plan is to take a short break while we give members of the public a chance to register. So, and we've been here for two hours, so it's time for a break anyway. So let's meet back, it's 8:23, let's meet back at 8:33, 10 minutes.
All right. And for those members of the public who have not yet logged in. Just as a reminder, the call in number is 1-872-240-3212. Access code 503-744-261. And there is a link that you can also type into your computer if you so choose. We do have a signup list that we will be starting with when we return to the meeting, starting with individuals in support. And we will put that on the screen when we get to that point. Thank you.
Did we lose anybody? Is everybody back?
You scared the heck out of me.
Paul, it's Linda. I don't see Vera.
I saw Vera for a second, and she's there somewhere. She's lurking. Maybe she's signing on again. There she is.
She's logged in. So, we do have a few people who've called in. If you've called in, can you please state your name just so we can identify you? Again, if you've called in, can you please state your name and identify yourself?
So, we can start with the...
We can start, and if there are additional speak, we'll go through the additional list, or the current list that we have, and then you can, we'll ask for, before we move on to the next category of speakers, you can ask if there's anyone new. We did receive a question in the chat as to how to sign up to speak, so you can either put something in the chat and let us know if you want to speak in support or opposition. We'll add you to the speakers list, or you can simply respond when the chair asks at the end of that list if there's anyone else who would like to speak in that category. And then one other just comment regarding the use of the chat. It's great for technical questions such as how do I sign up? If you have any specific comments that you would like to offer regarding the application or questions regarding the application, please put those in your comments to the commission because the chat is not officially part of that record. So, any substantive comments really should be placed in your comments for the presentation.
So, just out of curiosity, how many people are on the list?
So, we had 10 people pre-register. Actually, I believe it's 11. Just looking at this now, I think I miscounted. So, we had 11 people pre-register. So, we'll start with the, those in support, and the first speaker is Karen Zimmer.
Okay, the floor is yours, Karen.
And we should note we're restarting at 8:37 PM.
Yes, 8:37.
Okay, good evening. My name is Karen Zimmer, and I live at... Thank you all for your diligence. I'm speaking again in favor of the Agbotic Smart Farm proposal. Last week, I sent you a letter describing one neighbor's experience with Agbotic in the New York State location. I spoke with her by phone, and I would just like to highlight the fact that this neighbor has no problems with Agbotic. She loves them. She finds them to be excellent supporters in the community, and her only complaint is that they don't have a farm stand because their produce is really amazing. She is on the board of the local food bank, and I believe she's a caterer. I'd be happy to connect you with her if you would like to speak with her yourselves. My written testimony also touched on the fact that here in Connecticut, we have a right to farm law. Many other types of farming can be done on the property in question without a permit. Other farms might use much more water. I read the Leonard Water Report, and I understand, at least I think, that the PCC doesn't really make water decisions, but any viable form of agriculture would probably use at least as much water as this smart farm. For example, 100 dairy cows would drink 5,000 gallons of water per day. It takes 27,000 gallons of water to irrigate one acre of crops to one inch. Alternative types of farms may have slow tractors dropping smelly, squishy manure along Brown's Road. They may have security lights and noisy machinery. They could spray pesticides and herbicides which would drift over the neighbors, and according to Connecticut law, they would have a right to do it. So, it seems to me that the neighbors are guilty of confirmation bias, telling each other incorrect facts about huge water usage, et cetera, and inspiring fear about what might go wrong. When I heard some of the rumors, I decided to investigate for myself, and what I found was very different from the exaggerated fears that I heard. Finally, I'd like to point out the incredible value to having locally grown and healthy produce in our town. I asked Mr. Goss, the CEO at Sackett Harbor location, about the relative costs of growing greens in the Smart Farm greenhouses compared with hydroponic greenhouses. He told me that greens that are grown in fields, not in greenhouses, are slightly cheaper to grow, but as we all know, the growing season here is pretty short. And so, in the off-season, either we get fresh produce from places like Florida, Mexico, or California transported here at great carbon expense, or we have hydroponic greenhouses which are much costlier, less healthy, and less environmentally sound because they use more water and chemicals. Locally-produced, healthy food year-round will improve food security in the Northeast. I understand that the pressure from the neighborhood is intense. New technologies often face backlash from people who want things to change the same, to stay the same. Back in the day, people also panicked at the idea of tractors, but the world is changing, and innovation in many areas is necessary for our very survival. And if anybody has a question that I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Karen Zimmer? Okay, if not, next, who's next?
Michael O'Neill.
Good evening, folks. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. I am, my name is Michael O'Neill. I'm the Senior Associate Dean for Extension and Diversity in the College of Agriculture, Health, and Natural Resources at the University of Connecticut. And I'm very pleased to be, to have the opportunity to speak in favor of the Agbotic proposal for the Smart Farm. As has been discussed by their experts and, and I'm sure documented in their application, Smart Farms are really a new wave in the United States for agriculture, but globally, these have been going up all, all around the globe for decades. We see this as a tremendous opportunity for our students to really experience a completely new version of agriculture that represents a part of the future as we look at food production in the United States. And many of us, I'm sure or aware, that land costs in Connecticut are extremely expensive, and for beginning farmers, it's often very difficult to get into farming because of the cost of land. We see the Smart Farm as an opportunity for beginning farmers to really get started in a new way that can actually reduce their overall costs by shrinking the footprint but also producing high-value crops. So, for our students, this represents a really, a totally new opportunity to see farming in a high-tech environment as opposed to more traditional, conventional agricultural production. We've also, you know, documented in our letter that land has, agricultural land has been consumed over the past 30 years. We have very clear data that show the loss of agricultural land in the state, and that's resulted in the movement and the shifting of agriculture, especially food production, outside of Connecticut. So, this type of Smart Farm is really an opportunity to reverse that trend and bring local food production back to the state of Connecticut, which we see as a really great benefit to the state. And this is something that can actually make a huge difference both in the local community where I know Agbotic has had a really strong farm-to-school program, but it's also possible for all of our community members to benefit from locally-produced foods. And once this, once the Smart Farm concept begins to take off, we believe that many of our urban environments that lack access to fresh fruits and vegetables will soon be able to get those food products because of the availability of local Smart Farms. So, this is a trend that we see benefiting not just the economics of the community, but also the health and well-being of all members of the community, and particularly community members that may be from low-income families. Another benefit that we envision is the research opportunities to work with Agbotic on new varieties and on opportunities to really look at healthier foods through genetic testing of different kinds of varieties. And so, we see the research opportunities as a real place for both our students and our faculty to benefit from this partnership. And I would also just make a simple case that in the past three months, just by partnering with Agbotic on a research proposal that we submitted to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, we will now be able to support students from both the Mohegan Tribe and Mashantucket Pequot Tribe to come and learn agricultural practices at the, at the University of Connecticut. But, you know, one of the things that we want to, them to experience is how to really see what, what Smart Farms were all about. So, we're very excited about this opportunity. We are grateful that Agbotic has selected this area and, and, you know, really selected University of Connecticut as one of their partners to get this opportunity going here in the, in the local area. And our, our letter should be in the record, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Next person, Linda?
The next person is Joan, speaker is Joan Nichols.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of support for this, this application. My name is Joan Nichols. I'm the Executive Director for Connecticut Farm Euro Association. We're based in Weathersfield, Connecticut. We represent nearly 2,500 farm families in the state of Connecticut. I'm speaking in support of this application. I, I had the opportunity to read through the Mansfield Plan of Conservation Development. I also had the opportunity to read through your planning and zoning regulations. And what I got out of your POCD is that agriculture is important to the town of Mansfield. It resonates through your POCD, as does the need to address implications of climate change, businesses that are sustainable, that are looking at sustainability, want a wise use of your natural resources, water, soil. And so, I read that, and then I looked at this application, and they just seem to have synergy. Your POCD is looking for, to support agriculture, to encourage new agricultural operations. That's one of the preambles in your planning and zoning regulations. And so, when you look at this application, this is state-of-the-art, and this is agriculture, and this is the future of agriculture in Connecticut. Our farmers have got to figure out ways to grow food locally and buffer them, again, buffer them, buffer their operations against climate change, pests, pathogens, all of the things that farmers for hundreds of years have had to fight against. And this is an opportunity to take the latest in technology, which we've all heard and, and I've read about it. It's happening in Canada, it's happening in the Netherlands, in other parts of the United States. And it's about time that we see these types of operations in the state of Connecticut. And so, I did submit a letter of support, and I'll allow you to reference that date at June 2nd. But if you want agriculture and you want to support agriculture in the town of Mansfield, these are the types of operations that we're going to be seeing growing in Connecticut and in New England. And I urge your support for this. Mansfield really could be the model for how to embrace the future of agriculture in Connecticut. And I'll just say that probably within the last 12 years or so, I worked extensively with the town of Mansfield in helping you develop your planning and zoning regulations. When you adopted the municipal options, tax reduction programs for farms in Mansfield, I worked extensively with your agricultural commission on that, and I welcome the opportunity to work with the town of Mansfield. But this, I think, is, is, this operation is sort of the fruition of all of the good work that the town of Mansfield has done to come to the point where you really want to support agriculture and the future of agriculture in Connecticut. And I'd ask for your support in this application. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Okay, if not, thank you, and our next, who's next?
That is the end of the list for speakers in support. So, if there are any, if there's anyone else who would like to speak in support, now is the time to speak up. And again, just a reminder, please, if you're using the chat, is, any comments that you're placing in there are not part of the public record. You need to include those in public testimony. Any questions you're posing to speakers are not included in the public record. So, again, I'm just going to encourage you, the chat really should be for technical questions, not for providing substantive input or feedback because it really is not part of the record. So, is there anyone looking to speak in support? All right. Moving on to speakers in opposition, the first speaker is David Evans.
Okay, David Evans.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Am I, am I visible?
You're not visible, but we can hear you.
Camera on. Can I, can I just continue verbally?
Yes, you can just continue. We can hear you fine.
Here we go. I don't know what, what changed, but glad it did. I'm opposed to this project mostly on this parcel with so many neighborhoods impacted. The, the, the concept is, is, is very intriguing, and, and I, I can see the potential in a lot of ways. But Brown's Road is, is a, is a, is a tough road. The problem isn't just driving in and out of, 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 of any location. It's the curvy nature of the farm road without shoulders anywhere. There are places where passenger cars are always over the center of the lane because of the narrow road. Current UPS, FedEx traffic along with other trucks and school buses pose problems for, for walkers, runners, and vehicles. We live around the corner from there. The Goodwin Trail is across from the street. The four- to six-month period of construction will be, could be a very difficult one. I know that's a short period of time, four to six months, but still, we've got to live through it. I'm concerned about the charcoal filters. We'll take care of the, of, of the industrial hemp smell. I read the dean's letter and, and, and his, his referral to the two grad students who have had some experience with charcoal filters and see that that can be, can be a help in reducing the impact, but not necessarily defining how much it would help. Mr. Pre told us that the initial income would come from the, the radishes and the salad greens and, and the, and the herbs and all that, as well as, as the industrial hemp, and that, that really the industrial hemp is, is where a lot of the future will be because it's so usable in a million products from things like clothing and even lip balm. But unlike veggie, and unlike veggies, it doesn't spoil, but searching industrial hemp, you find out that, that there are a lot of concerns and that most industrial hemp is growing, grown outdoors. And I'm also concerned that, that, oh, once they've got the permit, they can, they could start growing industrial hemp on the prom, on the property as well. Maybe, and, and that could increase the impact on the neighborhood. The only thing addressed is, is the, is the greenhouse project and continuing the outdoor activities of the farm now, which are the hang and the blueberries and, and the logging. And so, I don't see any of that traffic diminishing in the future. This will be on top of it. The, the reference to Sackett, Sackett Harbor and, and what they're doing inside there, I'm sure are all accurate, but there's quite a bit of difference between Sackett Harbor and Mansfield. If you look at an aerial map of, of the Sackett location, the town of Butts Lake, Ontario, and the small population of about 1,400 is basically close to the lake. Their vehicles come and go on a county road, County Route 75, I think. And from there, they're just half a mile away from Route 3, a major east-west highway for trucks to go wherever they need to, and only nine miles away for Interstate 81. So, they're up there, they're driving on roads built to So, um, they're up there, they're driving on roads built to carry the traffic in, in a, a more isolated area with no neighborhoods, unlike this proposed site. We have very few roads like that in Mansfield. Route 44, 195, the state roads are the, are the ones that, that, that really have the, um, the ability to carry, uh, heavy weight and lots of it. Anyway, those, those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Uh, who's next?
Judith Love doll.
Okay. Go ahead. Your turn.
I'm trying.
Okay.
I think I've almost got it there. Hi, uh, I'm Judy Love doll. I'm a residential Brown's Road and I'm a graduate of the College of Agriculture up in Storrs. I've been involved in agriculture for 55 years, uh, growing up on a sustainable dairy, later owning a Christmas tree farm. I'm a former member of the Town Agricultural Committee and facilitated the bargain sale under preserved development rights for my family's farm of 50 acres in Southbury, Connecticut. I studied under Irving Fellows, who some of you may know was responsible for Public Act 490, which allowed the state to purchase development rights of much of the amazing farmland that we have preserved today. And I can assure you that the intent of those programs and grants was not to develop commercial industrial projects, but to preserve the precious little agricultural land that we remained. It prevented farmers from having to sell developers, uh, sell to the developers as they retired. The fundamental question as to whether this project meets the parameters laid out for the purchase of development rights is further being explored by our agricultural economist Ron Petrow, uh, with the benefit of legal counsel. I hope that all of you have been able to read all the studies and statements that have been submitted. Much of the information is conflicting. Much of it is a work in progress that people keep changing as new information, uh, is revealed. And sometimes it's very hard to sort out. We also find that the data that's provided, although it appears to be very scientific, can very easily be cherry picked. You can pick only certain houses in certain locations, uh, where you test or find out what the water supplies are to support your particular positioning. There are, however, six key points that continually and repeatedly surface that I don't think even with clarity and explanation tonight, we really have satisfactory solutions to. One is the issue of water. I think John Winard, my speaker tonight, he's the Certified Professional Engineer and Land Surveyor that has expertise in hydrology, who prepared and submitted a detailed water report. He concluded, "There is no aquifer," and I need to repeat that, "there is no aquifer and there is no waters, public water supply that can support the water consumption necessary for the greenhouse and packing operations at this site." Agbotics, on the other hand, submitted a report that indicates there's plenty of well water for the operation. And yet currently we have in the immediate area, over one-third of the residents experiencing shortages currently, mountain dairy who has to truck water in. This is obviously a critical reality of what we're living with here. On the topic of energy, Eversource has confirmed several things. The building a solar farm outside of this immediate area will not positively impact our grid. There's currently a long waiting list for the virtual net metering, which really the regulations keep getting modified. And if it's even improved, the credit does not go back to the town or town residents, it goes to the owner of the solar project. Most importantly on this issue, the conditional approval that was granted by the Commissioner of Agriculture is really being violated. I, three of the conditions states very clearly that electricity generated by photovoltaic solar arrays will be utilized on a farm for agricultural production purposes. That was one of the conditions listed by the conditional approval. That's changed and no response has been received from the Commissioner of Agriculture, nor has his approval been eliminated. An economic index, I haven't seen a C V A, a cost benefit analysis. And after 30 years of project management, I know that no project should proceed without a thorough understanding of costs and benefits. Research that was done by our C F A, Mike Stewart, who lives right next to the project, indicates there are substantial concerns as to the economic viability of this project.
I'll have to interrupt you right there. We, we do not deal with the financial and economic matters and the P C C. And although I'm an economist and I would love to talk about economics all night long, that's, that's not a subject that we talk about.
It's very important that we understand the tangible benefits for the taxpaying residents of Mansfield, uh, because we've seen so many businesses unfortunately fail here. I think we need to do due diligence and, and really consider cost benefits for any project that's being concerned. If that needs to go back to economic development as a more appropriate place to consider, then so be it. So I will continue there. Traffic, as Susan Stewart pointed out, who is a resident of Brown's Road and an Abbot worker here, uh, she shared the traffic patterns and utilization of Brown Road and clearly articulated the hazardous conditions that already exist and why the road can't absorb added construction, ongoing traffic, and why it can't avoid bus traffic and pedestrians. It doesn't even deal with what the projected delivery to just get gravel alone to the project, 300 truckloads of gravel to just get a base put down for these greenhouses, not to mention the soil materials, fertilizers, greenhouse, et cetera, that has to be trucked I know that a request has also been made to declare this spectacular one-mile section of Brown Road scenic roadway. And I think when the photos and videos of this will speak for themselves and will understand why this area should continue to be preserved, just as Joshua Trust and the development rights have preserved it. And it cannot be transformed into a delivery artery. Wildlife's another concern. Interestingly, as pointed out, the D E P, as indicated, there's a critical wildlife area in the back portion of the property and it is in the National Diversity Database. No one's done an inventory of flora and fauna here. However, again, the neighbors see bobcats, hawks, eagles, owls, bobolinks, monarch butterflies, many of which are on a protected list, all within proximity of this location. The pollutants, noise, light, air, odor, they may possibly mitigate it with shading, ventilation and filtration, but those requirements definitely need to be specified in any approved permit, if it's granted. We also bear in mind that many of these technologies that are experimental and unproven and approved, uh, ineffective in other areas and numerous articles were submitted that indicate some of the problems experienced with these filtration processes. So those are just some of the repeated concerns that were raised with over 115 neighboring residents that do not feel Brown's Road is the appropriate location for the Agbotic Greenhouse Project. These are longstanding taxpaying communicators whose voices need to be heard and concerns resolved. The town Agbotics and local residents may well be setting themselves up for a future of legal disputes and court cases if these concerns are not addressed upfront. Agbotics has the potential of being an amazing and progressive operation. I applaud their efforts to promote organic greens, but this effort does not belong in a residential area with hundreds of homeowners being negatively impacted. We can call this R A R 90, but the reality is we have many, many homes here, of which the majority of folks have signed off saying, "This is not a good location." We live here, we know the water issues, we know the traffic issues, we know the wildlife concerns. A true partnership with the university who seems very, uh, interested in this, um, with their agriculture department or even with a pharmaceutical research firm, uh, that's looking into maybe emerging marijuana or hemp, would be a much more suitable marriage for Agbotics to pursue. A partnership with the university on university property would seem ideal. UConn is endorsing the educational and research opportunities of the venture and could easily experiment, monitor, collect all the data, and that might be the proving ground that helps this industry move forward if it's successful. There's an abundance of, uh, uh, land off of UConn, uh, up by the student farm, by the training school, beautiful flatland right next to a railroad, right past the state highway, Route 32, 42, or perhaps the opportunity zone. Again, some flatlands there and open parking space available that have public water, have public sewage and has its state highway. It's the opportunity zone you're trying to develop to prove that this kind of agriculture could well be on a rooftop in a city. So with all of that, I sincerely hope that the commission looks towards truly sustainable and responsible development and poses this project at its present location. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. If not, um, Linda, who's next?
Scott Rhodes.
Okay. Scott Rhodes, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Scott Rhodes, 422 Brown's Road. Karen Zimmer stated that there is misinformation being spread about this project. I take exception to that. All information that neighbors have published have come directly from the project developer and from documented research. Any misinformation that is out there originated from the developer. Just as the project plans have been revised four times, so has the information that has been relayed to the neighbors. I do not know if that was by design. If this were a positive project for our neighborhood and for Mansfield, maybe we would, would have been notified a year ago instead of just recently, when legally mandated by the special permit process. The special permit process includes notifying neighbors within 500 feet. Neighbor's response should be a deciding factor. There is an overwhelming response. Please listen to the neighbors. Water issues, smell, noise, traffic, nightlight, crime and property values are real concerns. Worry is the biggest issue for me. If the special permit is granted, our worry-free existence in this beautiful area of town will be gone. Will there be Agbotic signs in my front yard because I'm just 250 feet from the entrance? That worries me. Why make one businessman happy with a special permit when you can make scores of Mansfield residents happy by denying the special permit? I am surprised that John Pre and Agbotic still pushes forth after hearing from the, the surrounding neighbors. I know deeded land with a special permit is cheap land. Now I realize that Mansfield may want to get involved with new ventures. This is the wrong place and time. The project should not be in any neighborhood. Mansfield and UConn could wait a few years to see how this startup company progresses and then, if still interested, help find a building site away from neighborhoods but close to UConn. On the Agbotic application, two sentences bothered me the most. Number one, "Will the project be on a designated scenic road?" The answer was no. "Will the project be in a historic district?" The answer was no. An application is underway for consideration for a section of Brown's Road to become a designated scenic road. The area is scenic. The abutting Sterns Farm will be 250 years old next year. The first home in Mansfield City area was built in 1760. The area is historic. Along this area to be considered for designated scenic road, there are 21 houses. 20 homeowners signed on for this application. The seller of the land is the only one that chose not to sign. One person would own the land for this project and other people would own most of the company. The possible negative implications are numerous. Many neighbors, experts in fields related to this project application, offer compelling and free research which suggests a special permit denial. Many neighborhood meetings were held to examine updates. Nobody ever showed up with a suggestion that indicated that we can live with this. Over 130 signatures are saying no to this location. Please listen to those citizens of Mansfield. The project goes against the last Green Valley qualities. Pamphlets which promote the future of our town states the following, and I love this, "Discover Mansfield, welcome to Mansfield, explore our scenic roads and historic villages, enjoy world-class arts and athletics and hit the trails." That is true and that's why I love Mansfield. In Granby, Connecticut, where Agbotic was denied, the town manager wrote the following sentence in a letter to the public. "They are looking at other towns in Connecticut and would be seeking tax abatement." As a neighbor pointed out recently, Section 5K of the Planning and Zoning Commission's special permit requirement says, as you know, "Basic design of the proposed uses, building or development should be in general harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not serve to blight or detract from the value of abutting residences or other property. Our peaceful, healthy, worry-free existence is at stake." Please deny, please deny this special permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Who's next on the list? Linda?
Uh, Sarah just raised her hand, so I think she might have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know. Maybe this goes to you, Linda, but I know this has come up in, in other conversations, the tax abatement issue. Is that, is that an issue here?
Uh, you, that, not for the Planning and Zoning Commission. If the applicant wa, seeks a tax abatement, that would be something that would have to go through the town council. That is not something that's under your jurisdiction.
Okay. But that, that hasn't been raised anywhere that, it's so far.
I don't know again, because it's not something that comes through us.
Okay. Thank you.
That has to go through the town council.
Who do we have next on the list?
Michael Stewart.
Okay.
I think you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
And let's see. I'm trying to see if you can see me, but doesn't, that doesn't seem, share my webcam. Well, my, my image will remain a mystery.
That's okay. We can hear you fine.
Thank you, Paul. My name is Michael Stewart. My wife, Susan, and I have lived at 428 Brown's Road for 34 years. I am a chartered financial analyst with 40 years of experience studying companies. So please forgive me for some of the financial jargon, uh, in my comments tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission page of the Mansfield website includes the following sentence. "Planning and zoning standards and land use review processes take into consideration the town's natural, historic and cultural resources, potential traffic, environmental and neighborhood impacts, fiscal and legal considerations, and other factors raised through the town's public review processes." I must tell you, uh, Mr. Chairman, that I'm afraid you're going to cut me off, um, but I want to emphasize that my analysis of Agbotic is not aimed at predicting whether or not its project on Brown's Road would be economically successful. My question, and yours too, I hope, is whether or not Agbotic is able and willing to pay its fair share of property taxes to the town of Mansfield. And again, I want to quickly add, I understand that will be a decision not for your commission, but for the town council. That is why I submitted a letter on April 29th, addressed to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council. That letter was a rebuttal to a March 10th letter to the same two institutions from the Mansfield Economic Development Commission that concluded its assessment of the Agbotic project by stating benefits are exceed the costs. by stating benefits are exceed the costs. Unfortunately, the Economic Development Commission did not identify any tangible, quantifiable benefits for the residents of Mansfield. Meanwhile, the costs, risks, and uncertainties associated with this project have been identified and analyzed by my neighbors. There is one mistake in my letter of April 29th. As you all know, Agbotic currently operates six greenhouses in Sackett's Harbor, a village within the town of Hounsfield, New York. Minutes from a meeting of the Hounsfield Planning Board on May 1st, 2018, identify the owner of the land under those greenhouses as Jennifer Goss, G-O-S-S. Jennifer Goss is actually Jennifer Gauss, G-A-U-S, the wife of John Gauss, founder and chief executive of Agbotic. This is an important observation that I will return to later. Unfortunately, due diligence on Agbotic is complicated by the fact that it is a private company and therefore not required to disclose the results of its operations or its current financial condition. Nevertheless, here are a few financial facts about the company.
I'm afraid we are not discussing their financial abilities or prospects. All we're discussing is whether this project is appropriate for that location for the reasons you listed earlier.
So, Paul, I think you are telling me that the commission's mission to consider fiscal considerations as outlined on the town website is not accurate.
I interpret fiscal to mean whether the effect of taxes on Mansfield. Not whether the taxes will be paid or not, but whether the taxes would be beneficial or not to the town. That's how I interpret fiscal.
Might I cite a few pieces of information that were included in a package that I delivered to the Office of Planning and Development earlier today? That package included minutes from the Board of Selectmen in the town of Granby in 2020. Those minutes indicate that Agbotic offered $330,000 for 50 acres within a 126-acre parcel for which the town of Granby paid $2.47 million in 2012. In other words, Agbotic offered $6,600 per acre for a property that cost the town of Granby over $19,000 per acre.
I think that's a problem for the town of Granby, not for the town of Mansfield.
It clearly was, Paul, and for that reason, and others, the application, the purchase, the unsolicited offer was declined. But also, in September of 2020, the Granby Town Manager told the Board of Selectmen that if the Agbotic greenhouses were built, the estimated annual property tax revenue for the town of Granby would be in the range of $165,000 to $180,000. A month before, in August, minutes from that meeting include, quote, "Agbotic is not requesting a tax abatement." And Mr. Preet, quote, "does not believe he mentioned anything regarding tax abatement." However, at the September meeting, one month later, the minutes state, quote, "It was noted Agbotic believes the buildings and robots are exempt from taxes." I'm only pointing out that in August, Agbotic was not requesting tax abatement, but one month later made the larger and lasting claim of tax exemption.
Those matters regarding the taxes are the jurisdiction of the town council.
Thank you. And I recognized that earlier. I'd also like to cite an article in the Granby Drummer, a local newspaper, on September 26th, reporting on that earlier meeting in Granby, that reported the company's estimate for its tax liability in Granby would have been $9,000 annually. I mention that because it's a very interesting number. Tax records for Jefferson County, New York, show the total property taxes in the current fiscal year for the property that Agbotic leases from Mr. and Mrs. Gauss were $9,281.80. Documentation of those taxes is included in the package that I delivered to Planning and Development earlier today. I also wanted to raise the question of why is the land on Brown's Road being purchased by John Preet and not by Agbotic? Though this is not illegal, it is unusual for a member of a company's board of directors to purchase land and then lease the property to the company. Such an arrangement at a publicly traded company would raise many questions among shareholders, auditors, and regulators. Also, if Mr. Preet believes strongly in the future of Agbotic, then he might take this opportunity to increase his investment and provide additional capital to the company so that Agbotic could purchase the land. However, land is an unusual capital investment. Unlike a building or equipment, land cannot be depreciated. Therefore, owning land is...
Let's go back to the subject of whether this should be located on Brown's Road or not.
One of my disappointments is that many of our fellow residents have taken the view that this is nothing more than a not-in-my-backyard issue. And I think what my neighbors have worked hard to demonstrate is that our concern is for all the taxpayers, all the residents of Mansfield, particularly as regards safety on Brown's Road, where so many school buses travel. I share a 450-foot border with this project. I'm told that Mr. Preet has made more than 20 visits to our community. I'm disappointed that he did not once knock on my door to ask how he might gain the support of our neighbors. I will be especially disappointed if the progressive citizens of Mansfield agree to a project where I believe the benefits, particularly at this location, will accrue to the company and to the applicant, while the costs and the risks will be assumed by the residents of Mansfield. Private benefits and public costs, the all-too-frequent outcome when corporate leaders seek and receive advantages from public institutions, and the outcome toward which I fear this process may be headed. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you very much. Who's next on our list, Linda?
Donna Evan.
Okay. Donna Evan, your turn.
Here I am.
Okay, we can hear you.
And I did try to turn my camera on, but obviously mine isn't working either.
Okay, but we can hear you well.
Oh, there you go. Now we're all together.
Okay, now, yeah, we see you.
My name is Donna Evan. I live with my husband, David Evan, at 36 Deerfield Lane. We are abutting property owners. And I am very concerned about the safety on Brown's Road. I'm an app... I was a runner, now a walker, and I know how beautiful Road, Brown's Road, is to walk on. It's one of the hillier ones, the curvier ones, but the reward at the top of the hill is just breathtaking. To walk that road and to know that you are going to be... There's going to be added semi-tractor trailers put on Brown's Road is just overwhelming. John Preet said that he basically using box trucks, but one to two semis a month would be going into the Agbotic site. He sees the need for changing the entrance, the driveway at Agbotic's, and so changes needed to be made. He's addressing those concerns of the safety, but he's not addressing the concerns of Brown's Road. Brown's Road is curvy, hilly, and is highly used by runners, walkers, joggers, and bikers. And with the addition of the Jonathan Trust Goodwin Tract, it is now a beautiful place to go hiking. I understand that he sees it as, and as has been stated, that the amount of traffic that would be added by Agbotic would not increase the risk of using Brown's Road as a recreational vehicle. I find that highly unlikely. You cannot increase the number of traffic of cars, especially commercial vehicles, on that road and not expect to be more danger to people walking it. I submitted a letter and a picture that I took on March 11th that shows what happens when a semi-trailer is on the road and a local vehicle tries to share that road. If you're a walker or a runner and you are in that pathway, God bless you, because in many cases, there's no place to go. This is not a statement of, is Agbotic a worthwhile venture? That's not for us to discuss. That will be seen. What is here is that it is not the place for it to be on 438 Brown's Road. The University of Connecticut finds this as a wonderful place, wonderful example of collaboration between Wave of the Future in Agriculture and the university. The university has many opportunities to work with them. And let's give them the access to the Route 44s and the 32s, not the 1.2 to 2.2 miles on Brown's Road that gets them to the highways that they need. Because of that factor, I really feel that for the safety, the neighborhood's concerns, and integrity of the Brown's Road community, that this project for the Agbotic's on 438 Brown's Road be denied. I really thank the commission, PCC Commission, and the staff for all the long hours and hope that you will take into consideration how devastating this project will be if it is allowed to locate at 438 Brown's Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for staying on topic.
You're very welcome.
Well done. Okay, who's... Any questions for Donna Evan? Okay, next speaker, who's next? Okay, Ron. You're going to stay on topic, right, Ron?
Okay. You got it?
Yeah, he can hear you.
Okay, hi. Paul, you and I, we look like brothers. Maybe that's the mole that they created economists from.
That's right.
White beard.
Can we see your picture?
Uh, we're trying here.
Okay.
My wife, she's the expert. There we go.
All right, yes, we are clones.
All right, look.
Same degree from the same institution.
Really? Which one?
Cornell.
Oh, that was my undergraduate.
Yeah, mine too.
It's a grad work. Okay. Well, I detect that there's some tension here about economists testifying, but I think we have a role to play here. And before we get to that, since the university has come on board here, I think it's useful. I think I need to say a little more about myself because I am an emeritus professor of agricultural and resource economics at the University of Connecticut. And in fact, in 2005, the College of Agriculture gave me their a Research Excellence Award, which is based on 10 years of research. And also, that year, the University of Connecticut, the whole university, gave me the award for excellence in the social sciences and humanities. And then in 2011, I was honored to receive the Research Excellence Award for the entire university. I spent 30 years in the Agricultural Economics Department analyzing many questions and issues that relate to this issue. Perhaps one thing which really stands out, when I was at Michigan State University for five years when I started out, I taught a graduate course in the economics of cost-benefit analysis and public program analysis, looking at public policies, teaching graduate students how to measure the impact of pollution on neighborhoods and cities. We used pollution data and property values to show a correlation between the level of pollution and property values. So I know the area. I think that the issue here about economic analysis, the Planning and Zoning Commission is required to consider the health, safety, and welfare of town residents. Economists analyze all three of those, especially welfare. There's a division of economics called welfare economics. Health, safety, yes, they're in the College of Agriculture. And economists there look at those issues. So I think with that introduction, I'll go forward and take a little different approach than the last report. I looked at the Mansfield Plan of Conservation and Development, and right up front...
We can see it bigger from my computer if you want to.
What's that? I'm sorry. Right up front, the very first thing they say is sustainability. And they say, what is sustainability? Sustainability is, according to their site, sustainability is the protection, the creation, and the maintenance of renewable systems so that they can continue to be assets for future generations. Examples of sustainable approaches are using resources and energy efficiently. I want to repeat that. I want to repeat that, resources and energy efficiently. This project involves two major resources. The first one is electricity and the second one is agricultural land. The question is, are they used efficiently? And that's an issue that in fact should be before this commission. Another issue in that is the issue of what is rural character? I'm going to finesse that. Uh, many of the other speakers have talked very clearly about the nature of Brown's Road. Um, so I won't, won't bring that up here. Um, so let's, let's go right to the, to the punch here. Mr. Prent claims that this project is sustainable, but it's not sustainable. If we look at the issue of carbon neutrality and the call for being carbon neutral by two thousand and fifty, that means that solar electricity is a very scarce resource, and especially in Connecticut, and it's best used for greenhouse, uh, for, best used for electric vehicles in heating of homes. It's not greenhouses. Um, the idea of sustainability is to eliminate, and I appreciate the double entendre here, to eliminate greenhouse gases, okay, in the environment, mostly carbon dioxide. Um, so the, the reason Mr. Mr. Prent claims that the project is sustainable because he's going to put solar in some other town, but that's not sustainability within the goal of attaining carbon neutrality. Give you an example from uh the town of Mansfield. The town of Mansfield is building a new elementary school. And this, the new school is completely carbon neutral and they are closing down three schools that use or generate carbon. So there is an example of going to a sustainable uh position in our town. And uh, that's what I'd like to see uh with regards to uh four thirty-eight Brown's Road. Okay, uh, if we, if we look at this issue of sustainability, you say, okay, um, what's, what's the big deal? Well, the International uh Energy Agency put out a study just recently that concluded that the only way we're going to be carbon neutral by two thousand and fifty is if we have massive electrification of our vehicles and uh our power generation itself. Um, and so that's where uh the electricity needs to go. And I was really, it flowed, the, the point was driven home to me uh a week ago when I read that uh the Ford Motor Company announced that they're going to uh produce in two thousand and twenty-two a fully electric F-one-fifty pickup truck. Now, I happen to have an F-one-fifty pickup truck from two thousand and sixteen, and I am, gotta admit, I'm getting a little tired of filling it up at seventeen miles per gallon. Uh, it's quite expensive. And now they're giving me the opportunity to go electric, and I will go electric. I will buy that truck next year. And you know what? Forty percent of the Ford Motor Company's vehicles by two thousand and twenty-five are going to be electric. And you know what? By two thousand and thirty, eighty percent of the vehicles in this country are going to be electric.
Ron, I think you're straying a little bit off the topic here.
What? No, that the topic, the topic is, is that.
The, the plan, uh, plan, we don't, uh, when we approve a pizza shop, uh, we, we don't ask them if they're sustainable or not. Uh, I think that's asking too much from the PCC.
Well, he claims sustainability and the town claims that they are, wanna go to carbon neutrality in their plan of conservation. So, what? I don't think we are asking too much from you. We're asking you to deny this permit. Um, so let's look, uh, the uh, the fact is, if you'll bear with me, um, uh, Agbotic um, wants to grow quote unquote real organic vegetables. So I looked around New England to see who does that, and I found uh four uh hydrochronic growers um, that, that grow those vegetables. And I found that these kinds of greenhouse operations routinely produce vegetables at fourteen dollars a pound that you can, you can buy uh for half that price if they're not from uh greenhouses. Okay, and if they're not organic. Um, so what we have, and if you look at these, look at these uh businesses, I provided actual Google satellite photos of them. One of them up in Devens, Massachusetts is a massive set of greenhouses and they've ripped down forests all the way around it for three large solar electric complexes. Yeah, they're, they're carbon neutral, but they're using all of the electricity to produce fourteen dollar a pound organic vegetables. And this point is, has to be driven home because the, the administrator from the College of Agriculture, he says that this is local and it's um, in fact, uh, going to provide food security. Who in the world is gonna buy fourteen dollar a pound vegetables? For food security, there is nothing. For locale, for local production, these plants in Concord, New Hampshire, in Devens, Massachusetts, in Providence, Rhode Island, they're shipping these boxed plastic organic greens into our local supermarkets. They're not local, and this company is not local. He's admitted that he's going to Boston and uh even possibly as far as New York for the marketing of his products. Okay, so let's go on, um. Yeah. The the electric is really fascinating. I, I really learned a lot and I think um it's uh, Mr. Prent and Mr. Gauss, um, they claim that they're going to build three hundred greenhouses in the northeast. The, the, the Assistant Dean from the College of Agriculture, he thinks that they should build many of these greenhouses in Connecticut. Um, but if they were to build the three hundred greenhouses extrapolating with his own megawattage that he's given, which I think is a very conservative estimate from what I read, um, it would, three hundred greenhouses require uh eighty-four megawatts of power. Uh, to be carbon neutral, according to his plan, they would have to build six hundred and thirty acres of solar panels to supply, that's enough electricity to supply thirty six, thirty-three thousand, six hundred homes. Or probably fifty thousand electric vehicles or more, okay? So that's where they wanna go and it, it.
Ron, you're, you're straying off topic now. We're, we're not talking about the three hundred. We're talking about one. We're talking about one project in Mansfield and whether or not that should be built in Mansfield. Please, please limit your comments to that one.
Okay, let's go, let's go to that. Uh, let's go to that. Mr. Prent states that he'll use approximately two megawatts of electricity each day. Um, uh, uh, that's fifteen acres of solar panels for two megawatts, okay? Um, that's enough to supply eight hundred homes with electricity. That's the two megawatt assumption, okay? Um, the, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is also charged to consider future plans of the applicant. Uh, Mr. Prent stated, and I quote, "Solar on parcel four thirty-eight will be in two phases, two megawatts first and then two megawatts a few years later." Um, that was in two thousand and twenty. So his plan in two thousand and twenty was for thirty acres of solar panels. Uh, Agbotic would then um, uh, draw electricity that could supply sixteen hundred homes, okay? According to the two thousand and fifteen Plan of Conservation and Development, there are only about three thousand homes in Mansfield. And I get that number by looking at the number of tax parcels that are five acres or less. It's eighty-two percent of the tax parcels. So there are roughly three thousand residences in this town. And in fact, he's talking uh about um, uh, over electric, over half of those. And then let me see here. Right, um, the fact is that we're, we're in a position where the town of Mansfield has the opportunity to really lead uh in, in, in important point. The allocation of electric power as we're going forward into this radical transformation of our transportation and house uh energy consumption. Um, the, the town of Mansfield and many other public uh decision agencies have to be progressive here and have to deny this urcipation of electricity by uh, uh, designer vegetables, basically. That's what we've got here. This is not the future of agriculture in Connecticut. It simply isn't. Uh, you, we're not gonna uh have uh, uh, several dozen greenhouses producing high-end designer vegetables. Their primary distribution channel was to high-end restaurants in Boston and other urban areas. They only went into supermarkets out of desperation because of COVID. Uh, perhaps they're going to stay in supermarkets, but they're not gonna make a lot of money that way. And the point is, is that it's, it, it's a niche product. It's not the future of agriculture anyplace. Um, all right, so there's a need, there's a need for public intervention, public.
You've become frozen.
Agencies have to make decisions that allocate electric power to not allow private uh, the warming of the earth unless agencies like this uh see the light and act accordingly. And you know what? If you went to our local high school and talked to the kids, this would be a no-brainer for them. They're being taught that, okay? It's us old people that don't realize it. So uh, that's the, that's that. Um, okay, so uh, the the idea that um the idea that it's a credit to Mansfield to be the home of this farm that has, and this is a direct quote from Mr. Prent, "The potential to address our current and future needs in food production," okay? Two points. This project does nothing for food security for our low-income and moderate-income people. Okay, and this project does nothing for our local farmers. This is not a local farm. This is a corporate agricultural venture. So uh, then I would, I would point to the fact that the, the land use map from the two thousand and fifteen Plan of Development, it's all green because of all the forest on it, that land use map, uh, in fact, uh, designates the uh four thirty-eight and four eighty-three properties as public open space and permanently protected open space, okay? The Plan of Development sees them as something that uh is open. And then um, they say they won't grow marijuana. Okay, but they do say they're growing hemp. As a matter of fact, they're growing over six thousand square feet of hemp. That's what they're offering right now. Um, and uh, the fact of the matter is, is that hemp stinks. How do I know that? I talked to somebody in the College of Agriculture and they had to kick a bunch of people in their local cannabis course out of the WB Young Building because of the stink, okay? They know it stinks. Um, and so I uh went up to Simsbury to the Curaleaf uh Corporation's Grow House on Hop Meadow Road. And I looked at it and, and I saw that a number of, uh, there were actually three vehicles from U.S. Mechanical and Energy Services out of East Granby in the parking lot, three big things. So I called them and I talked to an engineer there and I asked him about the issue of stink and, and uh of marijuana. And the first thing he offered was is that carbon filters do not remove stink. That's, that's, that's a falsehood. If you talk to any engineer that does this. And um, the fact of the matter is, he said that you need to use a misting spray around the greenhouse as if it were a dump. That's what they use around dumps as well, uh, to neutralize the spray. And I provided the, the commission with a quote from California where an engineer out there says exactly the same thing and they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars around greenhouses trying to control the stink. And what they got was you go from skunk to Bengay. So if you're in California, you get a choice. You, if you're near one of these places, you can smell skunk or you can have them install uh all kinds of misting and you can get Bengay, all right? So that's, that's the evidence uh there. The other thing that was fascinating about this is, is that if they were to install these uh, 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 air purifying systems, they told me that each of the units that they have there cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They actually said a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, okay? Um, and the engineer gave me the, 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 the boulders and the amps and computed the, the wattage. It turns out one of those units uses uh point eight eight seven megawatts of power a day. That's one unit. That facility is smaller than these greenhouses in square footage. Um, and they have twenty units there. So that, that marijuana grow house, it's not a greenhouse, it's a grow house, um, is using seventeen point seven four megawatts of energy a day, okay? That is equivalent to a hundred and thirty-three acres of solar panels, and that doesn't include the lights, okay? That's seven thousand and ninety-six homes, okay? So what, what's this saying about this project? What it's saying is, is yeah, they're gonna legalize marijuana and they're gonna let locals grow it in their home, which I think is a great idea. Uh, let people grow a half dozen plants. I'm not against marijuana. But what, as an, as an industrial organization economist, I'm telling you that this is a very unstable industry in Connecticut and the hemp industry is also very unstable. In the state of Connecticut last year, they grew about, I believe, a hundred and forty-four acres of hemp. Do you know how many acres they grew in, in uh Kentucky? Something like twenty-eight thousand acres. How many acres in Colorado? Forty thousand acres. Now you tell me where the hemp industry is gonna be located. Is it gonna be in Connecticut in a couple of these designer greenhouses or is it gonna be out there? And uh, there's a question, and it's located in Kentucky because of the economies of scope with tobacco. You not only have to grow this stuff, you have to dry the stuff. They have these big tobacco barns for drying tobacco. We've seen them in the Connecticut Valley. They used to be there. They're gone now. Um, are they gonna use the local barn here to grow tobacco or to grow things? Um, so that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, but I, I would say, I have a couple of comments. But I, I would say, I have a couple of comments. No, it's not too long. Let me keep going. The, the dean of the college, okay? I'm a member of that college, okay? And I take umbrage with his statements that, that this is indeed the agriculture of the future. Unfortunately, there's no agricultural economist who's been a part of their analysis of this. There's been no cost of these, of these greenhouses, no understanding of how, how they're going to work. And the, the other thing about it is they, he, he says, "As a result, the loss of farmland has shifted food production out of state." Okay? These smart farms can greatly increase food production in Connecticut and can improve food security in cities and towns across the state. What kind of food security are you getting from $14 designer vegetables? There's no food security in this project, absolutely none. And the idea that, that there, we're losing farmland, these projects, as you, as you've seen from what I've seen from these others, they can be placed in cities, they can be placed in industrial sites, they don't have to be placed on farmland. Great idea. Put it someplace else so that we can keep the farmland here to grow agriculture. And the last thing I would say is Linda Painter inquired of, about controlling stink from the College of Agriculture and I'm embarrassed to see the answer that she got from them. It's the most unprofessional, most low research-based answer that one could ever get. They apparently bought a carbon filter that costs less than $1,000. That won't do it for commercial greenhouses. As I've seen, $150,000 is what it costs and even then it doesn't control stink. The, the ultimate answer was given by a graduate student, not even a professor. And then the Connecticut Farm Bureau, their letter, they are a glowing booster for this and they, they, they say that it's going to produce a local food source that's resilient to the impacts of climate change. It's the exact opposite, as I've explained. This is detracting from our ability to combat climate change, climate change. It's not going to be resilient to climate change. Okay? And then they talk about the state definition of agriculture and note that farming includes greenhouses in the term farm. Well, if you look at that section of the state clause on the definition of what is agriculture, the very last sentence in that says, "Notwithstanding any decisions by a local planning and zoning commission." You have the authority to determine what is agriculture in this town. And I would ask you to deny this, this permit because this is not the best use of agriculture for the land that we have here. Okay. That's, thank you very much for hearing me. I'm sorry to be long-winded. My wife is telling me to slow down and to be quiet, but I, I've had my say and I appreciate you for hearing me out. And I, again, with my neighbors, would ask that this be denied, but I also base my analysis of denial upon 40 years of agricultural economic research on issues like this. And as you can see, I've tried to marshal facts to give you reasons why you should not approve this. And the most important one is the issue of sustainability and moving towards carbon-neutral by 2050. Let's let Mansfield be a leader in this area, not dumping solar panels into another town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Cartero? Okay. Is that the last one on the list, Linda?
No, you have a few more. John Leonard.
All right. Who's next?
John Leonard.
John Leonard. Okay. You have the floor, John.
John, you can unmute yourself and turn your camera on now. It looks like you, you're unmuted. There you are.
Okay. I am on.
We can hear you. Yes. Loud and clear.
My picture is on. So my business was water supply and I worked for the state of Connecticut, utilities in New London, Groton, Norwich, the US Supes and many other towns and industries. The Agbotic project is greatly disturbing to us and to the residents of this neighborhood. We came to this area to live in peace and quiet and hope to avoid an industrial, commercial development in our midst. Since my business was water supply, I wish to focus on that issue. Mr. Preet has repeatedly claimed to supply water necessary for the greenhouses using one well, one well, while none of the wells in the area use more than one gallons per minute, one gallons per minute. He claims that a single well could produce inadequate fuel to support irrigation.
Excuse me. Color 10 needs to mute themselves.
This is a miscalculation. Mr. Preet's well would be pumped day after day, 24/7, with no recharge. About 80% of the wells used in the residence in this area are constantly recharged through use of lithium fuel. Yet one-third of the wells, one-third of the wells in the area of Brown's Road are short of water in tons of drought. I know that the drum link which characterizes the area is over very dense bedrock. Although it is difficult to know the exact water flow pattern underground, the hydrogeologist claims that there is no interaction of the greenhouse property with that of the neighbors. Yet one-third of the neighboring residents clearly demonstrated the water situation at the last meeting of the planning zoning commission when they described how they lost water during drought conditions. The more compelling evidence for problems with water supply is the depth of wells. Out of 11 wells I observed in the immediate greenhouse area, all of them, without exception, were drilled to over 500 feet depth. The other wells on Deerfield Lane, mentioned by Agbotic as having depth 225 to 400 feet are beyond the drum link. Look, there is a huge brook and a crevice behind my land and behind Evans's land. That's the separating distance. Why they drilled down 500-plus feet? There was no water until that depth. This proves that the drum link is thick rock with very little water. Now we heard from the hydrogeologist about long stories of investigations in Westchester Country and other sources. But where were the tests? Did he, the hydrogeologist, conduct any test? Did he test the yield? He asked, "What if, what if the drop, the water runs out on the Mr. Preet's property? Will his property use of all the water from the neighboring wells also? Will the whole neighborhood have to evacuate? Will Mansfield buy us out or truck in water? Does Mansfield need this kind of catastrophic problem?" Because I use the word catastrophic not easily. Mr. Preet has a habit of reading the correspondence written to the planning zoning commission by neighboring residents and then modifying his plans to give more optimistic picture of the development. I wonder how he will overcome this overwhelming evidence. This evidence that all the wells along Brown Roads are over 500 feet. There is not a single well with less depth. There is abundant reason that the neighborhood does not want the greenhouses. The problems with this development is overwhelming. This development is not like the one in Second Harbor, which is in rural area. The proposed greenhouses are smack in the middle of a well-established residential area, as Mr. Rhodes has said. Why is there a planning and zoning commission if one cannot trust the town to preserve the neighborhood? Please give us back our peace and quiet. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Leonard? Okay. Linda, who's next?
Chris McNaboe.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, members of Mansfield PDC. My name is Chris McNaboe and I live at 13 Derrick Road. I spoke at the last meeting about the smell and I read the new information that was supplied. And I, I believe that we need to have a proactive installation of any kind of filters rather than waiting for a problem, as is indicated in comment one under the response to the town planning committee here, that charcoal filters on exhaust outlets for the greenhouse should be put on if there's a problem. I agree with other speakers that once it's built, it will be very challenging to play catch-up with odor control. And I respectfully request that the planning and zoning commission put filters as the restriction or condition, a prerequisite of construction if we should move forward with this project. I just want to also say I applaud the work of this PDC, the volunteer labor of love, like any public service, and I admire and I respect it. I humbly suggest that the planning and zoning commission adopt time limits for speakers from the public. This could encourage more participation from other members of the public and perhaps even potential future members of this PDC. Thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for being short. Linda, do we have any more?
You do. The next speaker is Regina Bereka.
Go ahead.
I am unmuting. Hello, my friends. Thank you all for being such a dynamic and interesting group. I, I will also, I've never been thanked for being short at 5:2. I've always wanted to be, so try to keep that in mind. I think that a lot of what's been prepared by the corporation has, is basically disingenuous. And I was very disappointed that Dean O'Neill was in favor of it and very disappointed that Ms. Nichols of the Connecticut Farm Bureau also spoke in favor of it. This is not agriculture, it's industry. It's, it's simply, it's, they're misappropriating terms when Ms. Nichols talked about the synergy of this. It's, it's a ridiculous use of this. Everybody in our community, everybody who is joined together here is saying this is not an appropriate use of the land. This is not, we are, I, I want to know how this is going to, how, I was astonished to hear that we are going to bring members of tribal nations here to teach them how to farm? That's supposed to be why we're, you know, transforming our small-town village neighborhood into something that could be run out of the TJ Maxx parking lot because that's what this is going to be? We're going to lose the possibility of seeing the night sky because I, I don't think anybody is going to be running up and back to open and shut those blinds, you know, unless they're signaling to the UFOs, "Oh, we're going to land." This is, it is just, it's just a wrong use of this. Yukon wants to profit and I understand that the university, I'd really love to know who at the university has signed off on all of this support. If the, Yukon has a lot of land and Yukon can use Yukon's land to make Yukon profit through the foundation, to help the students, God knows, I spent 34 years, like a lot of other people here, teaching students, wanting the best for our community, but Yukon can do that. Yukon does not need to piggyback on private industry, however entrepreneurial it would now like to think of itself because that's the fashionable way of trying to make every academic sort of, you know, find their own salary by digging in the earth. But I don't think that we need to do that here in, in an absolutely inappropriate setting. And I think what Scott Rhodes said, what Ron said, what everybody has argued, has been enormously persuasive. And the reason that we do live in, in, in a community where we get to have our voices heard, I was writing my little comments in the chat. Someone said, "Please come on and make them part of the record." So I am. I believe that we are cloaking the real, as a number of other people have said, but we're cloaking the real language of industry profit, of simple money, even if we're not supposed to speak about money, in the idea that this is somehow going to benefit the world. And this is not about benefiting the world. This is about putting money in the pockets of certain powerful members of the community who can then have more sway. And I don't think it's our business as members of a small town to make that happen or to make that easier for that to happen. And the idea of being able to tailor, as I believe Mr. Leonard said, of being able to then tailor the proposal that's being put forth to, to make sure that, you know, everybody is made happy, "Oh no, the well will be this, the driveway will be this, the trucks will be this big, there'll be little tiny trucks." Really, we're just to have tiny, tiny trucks moving through this. This is, is, again, it's disingenuous, it's false, it's, it's like paying off the maître d' to get a good table. It's, it's not why we're here, it's not part of this community. And I would be very disappointed if, if this happens and I think we'll never get over it. This is irrevocable. The decisions that we make now will be irrevocable for the future. You know, we're mostly a bunch of old people, which is fine and it's very nice and we want to protect. So we're all saying, "We could put this off for another few years, it'll be fine because who's going to know?" You know? But we want to keep this the way it is. There are a lot of places nearby and there's a lot of property near Yukon. If Yukon is so sure it needs to teach the students and especially people who have been on this land longer than we have, how to go back to farming or how to do it better because we don't, you know, we had to get used to tractors. We're not Luddites, we're not fools. We're people who understand where we live and we want to preserve a kind of way of life and not do it as some kind of stirridge village where we're going to start making our own candles. But it doesn't mean that we have to then become every place else in a strip mall on a freeway so that somebody can make a buck. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Gina Burke? A very good public speaker.
I don't know if that came across right now because I feel it's a Thank you. And thank you for all you do. Everybody is, the, the amount of research and heavy lifting, intellectual research, serious heavy lifting, has impressed me in, you know, more than I could say.
Thank you. Okay. Have we come to the end, Linda?
No, you have not.
You have not.
I do have one last listed speaker, and then you will need to ask if there's anyone else, because we did have someone ask earlier how they could sign up to speak. So the last person I have on my list is Ellie Rhodes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Aho, I'm sorry, I promise I will not be very long.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Try not to. I'm just as tired as you are. I just want to recap a few things as we end this up. I have to first start out by saying that I was very disappointed that this meeting could not be held in person. I want it to be noted for the record that there were several people who had difficulty getting on, who have no computers, who have no access, that would have gone to a meeting. And I know that it's not the PCC's call on that, but I just feel that it needs to be stated that there were people that last time couldn't get on, and I'm sure the same issue has, as we saw tonight, there have been issues with that. Having said that, I just want to mention a few other things that we might have forgotten in the whole process here. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Mountain Dairy, and if you drive up on Stern's Road there, the big red barn that they have, I'd like you to picture that big red barn, then add another 100 feet to that barn times six. That's what we're looking at in the space over here. To say that there won't be an impact on the neighbors is hard to imagine with the size and scope of that facility. I know that they have now moved the driveway in their plans, which brings it closer to neighbors, which again is going to impact neighbors for this site. And if this site were the perfect site, why would they need a waiver for groundwater? Why do they need waivers for other things? We would like, as they spoke earlier, we would like to protect our groundwater, and, you know, if, if it didn't need protecting, they wouldn't need a waiver. Remember that Sackett Harbor and Brown's Road cannot be compared apples to apples. Sackett Harbor is a public water supply, we are not. You have heard from experts tonight, Mr. Leonard, he's a professional engineer. He has an extensive background, and he has served as town engineer in Trumbull, in Branford. He has worked on projects, including regional water supplies in southeast Mass, the Susquehanna River Basin, and several Peruvian cities. He worked for Dallas-Fort Worth Airport. He's an established engineer, and his firm is a leader in the field of water supply. So we have to take his expert advice as well as the person that we heard from earlier. We also heard from Mr. Cotterill, Dr. Cotterill, and again, another expert. He has testified in the Senate, he has testified at the legislature from many different states. So we have expert opinions, they have to matter for something. The fact that they are in our neighborhood shouldn't count, they're experts in their field. Please consider that when you're talking. I'd like to know from Mr. Preet, who has 20 gallons per minute of water? Because I think if he did not have that 20 gallons per minute in the water, he wouldn't get the average of nine that he's getting. Yukon should not be a consideration in this because if they want it, they can have it in, over in their area. So as Ron said earlier, this is local, not local food production. Who's going to buy a $14 pound box of lettuce? I don't see how that, who can be able to afford that. And Mr. Aho, you talked about fiscal, and your definition for fiscal says what the beneficial taxes are going to be. My question is, what if they don't pay any taxes or very little taxes? How beneficial is that to the town? What is the town getting out of this? Please remember that just because they meet the requirements does not make it the right thing to do. Remember the statement on the PCC criteria. Basic design of proposed uses, buildings, or development should be in general harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and, in bold print on your website, will not serve to blight or detract from the value of abutting residences or other properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, we do have, if there are no questions for Ms. Rhodes, we do have another speaker. I missed his response to me in the chat, so Ken Cormier would be next.
Okay. Ken Cormier? Go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for all you do, and thanks for allowing me to speak. I have read the agbotic proposals and listened to several presentations. I've read the handful of statements for and the many statements against this venture for Mansfield residents. I've listened to interviews with local citizens, Mansfield's mayor, and John Preet on John Murphy's radio show on W E C S. I think there are many issues that are worth thinking about and analyzing closely, but I only want to mention one here. I'm willing to bet that almost everyone in Mansfield would agree that sustainable agriculture is a good thing, that organic agriculture is a good thing. The idea that this type of smart farm is the future of agriculture is perhaps plausible, although it's also anybody's guess. Perhaps it is and should be the future of agriculture. Perhaps it isn't, and it shouldn't be, and those who see better alternatives should do what they can to oppose this form of agriculture. The point is, however, that these arguments, to my mind, are not relevant here. The point is that this particular location is a problem for this agbotic venture. Like it or not, one of Mansfield's main assets, main virtues, and main attractions is the fact of its natural beauty and rural charm. And like it or not, that particular spot on Brown's Road is one of the most beautiful and sublime spots you'll find in town. I have loved this area since I first moved here in 1987. I have lived in other places since, but I have always returned here. I lived in the town of Hampden, where I still work and commute to, and I can tell you that that town has been simply devastated by industrial and corporate and retail sprawl. The reason I relocated here with my family for good is because it has not been spoiled in that way, and I regularly have conversations with fellow residents of Mansfield where we all say out loud how beautiful and wonderful this town is. It's a big reason why families move here and stay here, and we should not underestimate its power. Of course, we can't know for sure, but maybe it will turn out that there's enough water, enough electricity, enough road space for a brand-new fleet of delivery trucks to add on top of the traffic that is already stressing that area, and maybe the odor won't turn out to be a big issue for nearby residents, maybe. But in the end, if we are to begin opening up spots like this in our town to these sorts of humming, glowing, industrial tech farms, then we are unwisely chipping away at one of Mansfield's most valuable resources and assets. If the agbotic venture is truly the future of agriculture, if it is truly innovative, and if it wants to be truly good for the local community, then why locate it in a spot that a traditional farm from the past and present would normally reside? Where one of our many fantastic CSA farms might reside, blending seamlessly into the beauty of the land? Why can't this industrial, technological, agbotic venture exist in a town like Mansfield without inserting itself into and fundamentally altering one of the town's most precious and beautiful locations? Why won't those who are driving this new supposedly innovative agriculture see the logic in locating this kind of operation in an alternative, innovative, and ultimately more community-friendly setting? A setting that is already geared toward industry and technology? If this project moves forward, we will be stepping in the absolute wrong direction for Mansfield. It's difficult to quantify a thing like natural beauty, but I know for a fact that we will all feel it and know it when that special quality that our town possesses has begun to slip away. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying right on topic.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Ken Cormier? Okay. Does that bring us to the end?
That is the end of the list I have. I believe there are many other folks that are in the virtual meeting, so if anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time.
Paul, this is Chris Kiefner. May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm on the Agriculture Committee, and we looked at this proposal and approved it. And my understanding is that it is not visible from the road. Is that true?
That is, that is my understanding, that it's not visible from Brown's Road.
Thank you.
Chris, just to clarify, that question you were asking was, as you as an individual, not as, not on behalf of the Agriculture Committee, correct?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Thank you.
So we'll wait a minute to see if anyone else wants to participate.
Could I make a comment?
Sure. Who's talking?
My name, my name is Martha Cutter.
Go ahead.
I think my camera's on. I live at the other end of Brown's Road, so the agbotic doesn't affect me directly. I mean, I live past the intersection of Mansfield City Road. But I am very concerned because I'm a walker, and I walk my dogs up and down the roads. And Brown's Road happens to be one of the safer roads to walk on right now because it is wide. And, you know, the Mansfield City Road has gotten impossible to walk on. But I did raise the concern about traffic. And if you do go forward with this, I think you really do need to think about that as an issue because I have seen dogs get hit on this road because people are flying up and down the road, and there just really isn't space for trucks, as well as 20 to 30 additional cars trying to get to work on time, students coming in for internships, all of this other stuff. So I think, you know, you need to consider the safety of pedestrians, walkers, runners, and, you know, and, and people who actually enjoy the outdoors right now. And that is one of my favorite walks up to the top of that hill. I haven't done it as much since, as I mentioned in my email to you guys, I saw a dog get hit by a car that was going way too fast. It scared me. So I think you should just consider following up with what Ken's saying. The quality of life in this town is partially based on the fact that we can actually walk some of the roads and enjoy some of the roads, not all of the roads. But Brown's Road actually is one of the few that I will still walk with my two little poodles. And, 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 you know, there are many roads that I can't walk anymore. So I think that's just something to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul, Chris Kiefner again. May I ask another question?
Sure.
I am curious about traffic estimates. Traffic keeps being cited. I did hear one larger truck a month. Maybe it just happened and nobody noticed it now, but I'm wondering, what about the regular day-to-day traffic? Is there any number on that? I mean, how many vehicles does a farm produce and how many? Well, if, if it's, anyway, that's what I'm curious about. Does anyone have any answers to that? Does John, has John done any research on that?
There is a traffic report in the, in the packet.
Okay, I apologize, I did not read the entire.
Yep.
I don't mean to interrupt, but every time I hear people talk about traffic, it's more and more. So now I'm hearing about bringing students for internships and off of various places. And I've also heard different numbers on the trucks. The big trucks, yes, I've also, but I've heard, you know, workers, 20 workers going back and forth. I mean, so I, I've heard these numbers going up.
And what are the numbers? Is it okay to ask that?
I don't have them on the top of my head, but it's in the, it's in the packet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Marjorie Shansky.
Yeah. Oh, yes. I did, I did promise to let you talk after, after everyone's. Linda, have we reached the end?
That is, that was, that was, those are the last speakers on my list, so if there's no one else that is, has any questions or would like to speak, I think that is it for the public for this evening.
Okay, so we'll send it back to the applicant for final statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Attorney Marjorie Shansky, and I too want to thank the Commission for its attention and interest in this application. Before I recap and summarize a couple of points, I do want to direct some comments toward the testimony and commentary that the Commission just heard. Specifically, the, the first speaker and several others after focused again on traffic. And I simply remind the Commission that in the Traffic Engineers letter, April 28th, and in the Town Engineers' response, that the traffic is deemed by the Town Engineer is to be, to be negligible as it relates to existing conditions. And that the traffic letter was prepared very conservatively, as if all traffic were occurring at one time, as opposed to over the course of the day and the week. So in the traffic report, one will find the listing of the kinds of vehicles and their frequency, and, and the Town Engineer has corroborated the conclusion of the traffic engineer. With respect to agbotic signs that one gentleman was concerned about being in his front yard, there are no signs. There may be temporarily some construction sign or an address sign that, that points the way to where that activity will occur, but post-construction, no signage. With respect to the idea of the application referencing scenic roads, historic district, in reality, those are terms of art, and the answers were indeed appropriately no, notwithstanding that I understand there is something on the agenda this very evening. The Chair's interpretation of fiscal matters before the Commission, I think, was an apt condensation of that topic before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, and I guess I'd like to say this, that a plan of conservation and development is a vision document. It's a very important document as it charts the future course of a town and city, amended as it might be, but restated or amended every 10 years by statute. But it is not a regulatory document. The regulation of land in Mansfield occurs through the zoning regulations. So to say that this or that is not consistent, not, not, not consistent, because indeed we have consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Indeed, in her memo, Ms. Painter even identifies specific sections, agricultural uses, rural character. Indeed, in her memo, uh, Ms. Painter even identifies specific sections, agricultural uses, rural character, and future land use. Specific sections of the Plan of Conservation and Development with which this proposal is consistent. But all of the language about sustainability and broad interests and future goals of the town only become implemented through regulation adoption. So there's nothing in the regulation that talks about um the amount of solar or the use of solar or taps on electricity, simply that you're served by electricity. And uh even the reference to the uh Commissioner of Agriculture's letter endorsing and and approving of this uh use at this site where it talked about as one of the conditions, electricity generated uh on a solar array that might be located there will be used for onsite requirements, doesn't require that there be onsite solar. There wasn't one time an interest in onsite solar, but that is no longer the case. There will not be onsite solar. And this condition in the uh the Commissioner of Agriculture's letter simply becomes a condition that has application if there were onsite solar, but there isn't. Uh, so that's sort of a misreading of uh his letter. I will say once again, because it emerged notwithstanding my, my introduction, no marijuana. Um, uh, in his commentary, Mr. Cottrell misquoted the statute on agriculture and the definition of agriculture. It doesn't have the notwithstanding language that he cited to. It uh does say that nothing about the definition of agriculture shall restrict the power of a local zoning authority under Chapter one twenty-four. And indeed, that is what brings us here, your authority under the zoning statutes to require a special exception that we are here uh demonstrating our eligibility to receive. The, we are seeking a special permit pursuant to Article ten, Section T. Article ten, Section T, one of the regulations states, among other things, that the purpose of these regulations is to preserve existing agricultural uses and to encourage new agricultural uses. This proposal achieves both purposes. The existing agricultural operations that the property continue and the agbotic greenhouses represent new agricultural uses in Mansfield. The agbotic greenhouses will grow crops, a use which is squarely within the letter of the regulations. And this statutory definition of agriculture pursuant to Section one hyphen one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes includes the cultivation of any agricultural commodity. And under the same definition, the term farm includes farm buildings and accessory buildings and greenhouses in addition to other structures. Under the simplest rules of statutory construction in the state of Connecticut, we rely first and foremost on the plain language rule. That is the language of the definition, and this is squarely agriculture. And once more, the property is subject to a purchase of development rights by the State of Connecticut. And in his letter dated May sixth, twenty twenty, which is in the record, the Commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, the authority with jurisdiction on matters agricultural, supports this use at this location as being permitted within the parameters of the development rights, deed, covenants at this property. The applicant commits to observing the conditions of the Department of Agriculture's approval, and these are reflected in the application that's before the Commission. And we take, we think it is of no small consequence that we have attracted support from the Connecticut Farm Bureau and from the College of Agriculture Health and Natural Resources, whose letters of support and whose testimony this evening is in the record. And one of the speakers toward the end said, just because they meet the regulations does not mean it's the right thing to do. And I would suggest to you as a matter of law that a finding of meeting the regulations is exactly what makes this the right thing to do for the Commission to approve this application. With respect to the groundwater uh uh section, I think it's Article five, Section H. Hmm, I may be citing the wrong section, but Ms. Painter knows to what I refer in the groundwater issue that Engineer Perugini discussed in some detail before. The reservation that was expressed by this speaker, as many of the reservations expressed by many of the speakers this evening, they express their concerns. Concerns are not evidence. They express their concerns in terms of speculation. Speculation is not evidence. The point of fact is that the applicant has placed before this Commission the testimony of a team of qualified licensed certified experts. And their testimony is unrefuted. There is no hydrogeologist countering the testimony of the hydrogeologist. So by location on an agricultural site, this is a perfect location. I would refer the Commission to the Planner's Memo to her discussion of Plan of Conservation and Development consistency, which is also included in our Statement of Views. The Planner's Discussion of Regulatory Consistency, which is also discussed in our Statement of Views. And the fact that the town departments that I enumerated earlier and whose letters are in the record have signed off on this application as being in accordance with the regulations of the town of Mansfield. Mr. Chairman, if the Commission has any further questions, we are here to answer them. We thank you so much for your attention. We are, we think we have arrived at, at the end of the public hearing, and thank you for that. But please don't let this opportunity to query us further go by if there are things on your mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So uh, the next thing that we need to uh talk about is whether the hearing uh should be concluded tonight or uh extended into the future. Um, let me hear your opinions on that.
Are you speaking to the Commission, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, to the Commission, yes. Just to the Commission. Ken?
Ken, this is Linda. We can't hear you for some reason.
You're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Is it possible, are are your headphones also microphones? It's possible the battery may have died. Mr. Chair, while, while uh Ken attempts to solve his microphone issue, um, just for the Commission, i- if there are any questions you have for staff, for the town attorney, um, you know, there is a limited ability for us to answer those after the public hearing closes. However, that is limited, so if it leads to more discussion and more questions, we may not be able uh to answer. So uh, just one thing for you to keep, keep in mind in terms of if you have additional questions that you would like uh answered either from the applicant or from staff or again, the town, town attorney. Uh, the other thing I would note is that uh if you believe that the hearing needs to stay open, uh, we will need an extension from the applicant because we have gone beyond the thirty-five days. So that is something that the applicant would need to be willing to grant. Otherwise, you would have no choice but to close it this evening.
Okay, Vera, go ahead.
The, the only reason I would think to have a hearing continued is so that we could have a discussion. We really haven't talked about these things. And we need to have them come out, uh, and they might lead to other questions. So I think uh, the next part is the discussion amongst the Commission, but with the option of having a, a, a chance to ask the experts or the um, what, or the attorney, for one, uh, about some of our, our issues.
Is that possible, Linda, with, with closing the hearing or does, do we have to keep it open to do that?
Typically, you do not discuss the merits of applications. If there are specific questions that Vera is referring to in terms of specific issues that you're looking for more information on, um, then yes, you, you would need to keep the hearing open for that. And again, um, Attorney Shansky, uh, I would defer to you as in terms of whether or not your client would agree to uh an extension if the Commission i- is seeking additional information.
Ken, have you got your voice back?
No.
Nope. Oh, we can't hear you. Uh, did I see?
And try the, try the little gear sheet icon and you might need to change your microphone. Um.
Meanwhile, meanwhile, Luann.
This, I, I think this is geared towards to Linda. Um, the, the, the biggest concern that I feel like I'm hearing in this um has to do with traffic. Uh, and the traffic studies are um are fine, but they're talking almost explicitly about car traffic. And the concern really is about pedestrians and walkers. And was that traffic, is there, is that, that's not routinely actually assessed when you're doing a traffic study, is that correct?
I'm actually going to defer to Derek Delai on that, uh, if he is still with us. But I, I don't believe that pedestrians and walkers typically are addressed in traffic studies, but if Derek is.
No, Linda, you hit it right on the head. That's correct. You don't typically do unless you expect a lot of interaction like in a city or something to that effect.
Right.
In this, in this area, it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Derek.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna see if I could help Ken. Ken, if you hit the gear in the top right and maybe go to microphone, there may be an option where you have to select your headset microphone.
Yeah, I had just one further question then for Derek. Um, has there been any evaluation or discussion about uh putting the sidewalk on this road?
Uh, it's not identified, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not identified on the priority list that was identified in the, in the Plan of Conservation Development, so it was never a priority for um, engineering to make it a priority.
Would that be something that the residents could pursue?
Uh, absolutely. They could always pursue, any resident throughout town could always pursue, you know, sidewalks, et cetera. Um, it's always a balance of if you widen the roads, they travel faster. And it's always that balancing act and what measures are you doing? So we try to use some of the passive, you know, measures to try to reduce speeds as well as utilizing our um police force as well to help remind individuals to slow down.
Right. I, I'm familiar with that. In town situations, um narrowing, narrowing the roads actually helps tremendously for pedestrian safety. Um, but this isn't a situation where you could do something like that. So if, if there was concern about pedestrian safety, um, would a sidewalk be the, the best solution for that? Would it be doable on this road? Just off the cuff on your opinion.
Uh, it, it varies. Um, Brown's Road has varying rights of way between thirty-three feet, which would make it pretty difficult to put in a walkway without first obtaining some easements on the adjacent parcels. Um, so that's always problematic. Um, if there is interest in a specific area along the right of way, then that can be further evaluated. Um, if it's, for example, from, you know, some sort of development or concentration of homes to a public facility or some sort of public or civic feature, that would be very helpful.
And then I'll address this to Linda. I know in other types of development, not agriculture, um, in our regulations, we do have provisions asking um builders to add a sidewalk onto their frontage, and that is not something that we could ask here. Is that correct?
So the, the standard that you're referring to is actually in the Site Plan Approval Requirements. Um, and I will pull that up in terms of what um what and when you can require that if you give me one second. So this is the, this is part of the Site Plan Approval Requirements. Sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and/or other improvements designed to encourage and enhance safe pedestrian and bicycle use shall be required unless specifically waived by a three-quarters vote of the entire Commission for all sites within or proximate to Plan of Conservation Development designated planned development areas, proximate to schools, playgrounds, parks, and other public facilities, or proximate to existing or planned walkway bicycle or trail routes. In evaluating any waiver requests, the Commission shall consider the size and the location of the proposed development, its relationship to existing or planned development, school sites, playground areas, and other public areas, and the location and nature of existing or planned sidewalk, bikeway, or trail improvements. So that is, that, that's the standard um for when a, a, a sidewalks, bikeway, or trail or other improvements are required. Um.
Okay, that, that gives me something to think about. Thank you.
Yep.
Vera.
Uh, Linda, can you uh, uh, ask that our attorney be present at our next meeting?
Yes.
Especially for this application.
Yep. So i- if there are specific questions that you have for him, um, I'm happy to pass those along.
Fine.
Uh, yes, Carlita.
So if I'm hearing um us correctly, do we want to ask for a continuance to the, and keep the hearing open?
What, what, what's your opinion?
Mine?
Yes, yours.
I felt like we'd um hit the point where we needed to close the hearing, but.
I'm, 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 I'm tending toward that opinion as well. I think we've heard a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, Vera? Now, wait, now unmute yourself.
If we want to have additional opinions from some of our experts, then we, we don't get them. And we haven't had a full discussion amongst ourselves. So I think we'll raise issues that need to be thought out a little more.
But, but don't we typically do that af- after the close of a hearing?
Without ex, without, without additional uh clarification from an attorney, for instance.
What questions do you? Vera, what questions do you still have?
I I want to give full voice to concerns, but I also want the legal um the legal response to that. And I want to be absolutely clear that why we would approve or disapprove.
Can we finally hear from Ken? Can you call us up on the phone, Ken, somehow? No, too hard.
Ken, do you need the phone number?
I'd like to hear from Ken.
Yeah, it seems like he has an opinion.
Call us, Ken.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen with the phone number and the access code for you. Um, you're gonna need to mute your um iPad. Well, not that your microphone's working, but just in case we get feedback, I would mute your um computer or iPad.
There'll be some advantages to meeting in person in July.
Yes. Is that a given, Paul?
Yes, yes. The, uh, a- after June thirtieth, we meet in person.
Great. So I, wait, just to clarify, we, it, it's through June thirtieth. I don't know what the legislation is going to bring. You know, so right now the plan is to go back to in-person meetings, but I don't want to make it a definitive. I don't know if there's going to be a change in legislation that the Council may need to consider. So just to throw that out there. We're waiting to see what the, the, the legislature may be doing things, but the plan is to go back in person in July.
Well, I can see my face now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Um, I, I do think we've heard enough from other people so that we're able to make a decision based on the information we have. based on the information we have. Where I agree with Vera is I think we need ti- more time to talk about this amongst ourselves. And I think at eleven o'clock at night, after we've been sitting for uh oh, close to four hours at this point right now, I don't know if that we're really prepared to have that kind of detailed discussion. That, that's one. Secondly, I do need to ask of Vera, what is it that you would need to hear from our attorney that could reinforce whatever direction you think you're going in?
Well, actually, I think actually, I think that I would vote. Is, is this what you want me to say now?
No, I, I, what I'd like to ask is.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure that we need the lawyer at this point.
In defense of my ax- asking that the public hearing not be closed, is that I just want to give it the extra moment in time to consider both sides. I, I think I would vote to allow it, but I also want to ask uh how much of an, how much of a factor um whether you call it not in my backyard, or whether you call it a real concern for water usage, or um other disrupting factors to that, to that little neighborhood um can be an issue to consider. I, I, I just I just want to look at the other side of it before I vote. But I can, I guess I can, I mean, if you feel that we don't need to keep the public hearing open to have that discussion, I want to have that discussion.
That, that's where you and I agree about that. I think that discussion needs to go on. I'm just, again, I'll repeat, and I'm not sure that eleven o'clock at night um is the time to be having it.
Absolutely.
Good, yes, Darian.
So we can't discuss it until we close it?
That's correct.
I'm willing to close it.
The, the purpose of the hearing is to get all of the information that you need to make a decision, but not to actually kind of, you're not to discuss the merits of the application until after you close the hearing. So that's why we kind of push for you to ask questions of the participants, and then if there are any questions you have that are unanswered, that's a reason to keep the hearing open. If, if you believe that um, you know, there's, i- i- if you go through all the materials submitted, and I know quite frankly, you know, we got some materials from the applicant this weekend. They identified in their presentation this evening the minor changes that were made with that. Um, but if you thought for some reason, for example, that folks need more time to respond to that, um that could be a reason. But again, you're not, you, you don't, you typically don't start discussing this until you close the public hearing after you've heard from everyone, gotten all of your question, questions answered, and um, are ready to actually discuss the merits of the application and whether it meets the criteria for a special permit.
At, at this, at this point, I just feel we need to discuss it.
Yep. I, I think, I think that both sides have given it their best shot. We've got, we've had a very good presentation from each side. Uh, and now I think it's time for us to start our discussions after we close the hearing. Not tonight, of course.
No, not tonight. I defer then. Go ahead. We'll, I, I will vote to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, comment. If we would like to consult with the town's attorney about a point of law, we don't need to do that within the confines of the hearing, correct?
Correct, correct. It's just if it starts leading to other discussions, that's where he will say, I can't. So it's understanding that there's a fight, you know, he, what we can answer once the hearing is closed is going to be based on points of law, procedure. We can't offer additional information that was not part of um, the hearing process. I will say that one of the questions I have posed to him, which is a point of law, is that separation distance between um the.
That's you, Ken.
Ken, I'm gonna I'm gonna mute you. See if that helps. Um, so that is, i- is I noted in my staff report that re- that request to reduce the separation distance between excavation and the um high groundwater elevation was something that I needed to discuss with him. I posed that question. He doesn't have an answer as to whether or not you have the ability to grant that. So that's, that's, and I think Ms. Shansky has an opinion on that, which is up to the chair.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
Sure.
Thank you. It's Marjorie Shansky. The, the, the um re- regulation is, is quite direct in saying, uh, in, in identifying that that is available for a specific construction exercise, which this is an example of. So I, I appreciate uh the planner's sensitivity to that issue, but I believe it is captured within the regulation and appropriate under the circumstance. And has been uh explained and, and discussed in its protect- in its protection that also accords with the regulation by Mr. Perigini. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we have a consensus to close the hearing. Uh.
Just for the record, Katie Fratton left at ten thirty, ten forty-seven PM. She was not feeling well, so she, she was still watching, but she was not feeling well enough to continue to participate.
Okay. Um, so if someone wants to make that formal motion.
Well, I guess we thought we had because I said.
Okay, oh, okay, so move, move by the sec- second, second to the plan. Yes, okay. Uh, and we should do a roll call.
Of coursey.
Hi.
Uh-huh.
Hi. Ken.
I'm sorry.
Hi.
I, I didn't hear. Okay. Okay, Ken's eye caught me. Okay. Um, now my order. Uh, Plant?
Hi.
DeVivo?
Hi.
And Ward?
Hi.
Okay. The hearing is closed at eleven oh two PM on June seventh.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh as much as the commission may not want to hear this, you have another public hearing to open. The good news is I'm actually going to recommend that you continue it, and I don't know that we have any speakers for it, so.
So we need to open and close it.
Just, just to go back to the agenda, the next uh item on your agenda is a public hearing on a, the PZC initiated amendment to the zoning regulations to establish a temporary unlimited moratorium on cannabis establishments. It's PZC file nine oh seven dash fifty-one. Um, for the record, I am going to read the public hearing notice since we are opening it this evening. The following public hearing notice was published on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. The Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing on six, June seventh, twenty twenty-one via web-based virtual meeting to hear comments regarding the following. At seven fifteen PM, PZC initiate amendment to Article Three, Section A of the zoning regulations to establish a nine-month temporary unlimited moratorium on cannabis establishments, POC, PZC nine oh seven dash fifty-one. Information on how to participate in the public hearing will be placed, will be on the meeting agenda, which we posted at HTTP colon backslash backslash WWW dot Mansfield C dot C T dot gov backslash Agenda Center no less than twenty-four hours before the meeting. No information from the public shall be received after the close of the public hearing. Additional information regarding the proposed amendment is available at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot Mansfield C T dot gov backslash Document Center backslash Index backslash six forty-one, or by emailing planzoneDEPT at Mansfield C T dot org. Paul Ojo Chair, Benu Chandi Secretary. Uh, in pursuant to Executive Order seven I, this legal notice was published on the town's website on the legal notices uh webpage. Uh, so with that being read, I will note that you do have several pieces of correspondence. Um, in addition to my uh, my staff report dated June second, twenty twenty-one, you have, I, I did provide an email from Ron Cotterell, which was actually sent to uh state representatives and senators, but since it seemed to be relevant, I included it in your packet for this application dated five, May tenth, twenty twenty-one. A communication from Martina Wharton uh dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Town Council minutes dated May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Crog- uh, comments from the Capital Region Council of Governments dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty, and comments from the Southeast Council, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments uh dated May tenth, twenty twenty-one. You also have copies of the referrals that we did to uh all of the councils of government and adjacent municipalities and the town clerk in accordance with state statute and the public notice registry. So with all of that being said, after consulting with uh the town attorney uh today on this, his recommendation was that we continue this to June twenty-first uh twenty twenty-one, as the legislature has not yet adopted legislation on this. So A, we don't know if it will happen. B, if it does happen, we don't know what it's going to say. And so his recommendation was that we can, you know, by the twenty-first, we will know because the session ends prior to that date, um, what the statutes are and what, if anything, we need to adjust in the proposed moratorium. Uh, so my recommend-
We do need.
Continue it. Um, I, as I said, I'm not sure uh if we have anyone here to speak on this this evening, but if they are, this is something that will be continued, um, if the, if the commission agrees to June twenty-first uh twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so um, I need to open it, right?
Yes, we need to, thank you. We do need to open it. Sorry about that. I jumped ahead.
The hearing is open at eleven oh seven PM. And we should do a, a roll call.
Of coursey. Eric, sorry. Uh-huh.
Here.
Cooley.
Cooley is here.
Cotton.
Here.
Frattoni. No, Frattoni. Um, Hall is also not here. Plant. Air. Ron.
Here.
DeVivo.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Okay, so um, but before we have a motion to close the hearing, uh, one, one thing I'd like to bring up is if, if we wanted to have a moratorium on hemp in addition to marijuana, would that have to be a separate um public hearing?
Yes.
It can't be combined, okay.
Yes, so this, this is a question that I did ask the, the town attorney, and, and based on the language of this moratorium, it would need, if the commission wanted to pursue a moratorium on hemp, that would need to be a separate um initiated amendment uh and moratorium.
Uh, would it be okay if I took a straw poll on that right now? Uh, how mu- how many people would be interested in, in uh having another uh moratorium on hemp?
I'd consider it. I'd consider it. I don't know if I would, how I would go, but I would consider.
How many people would like to consider that?
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
Consider.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair, is that something you want to work on with the Regulatory Review Committee to bring forward uh proposals to the commission?
That, that's, yes, that's, let's do that in the Reg Review Committee. Now, I, a- as I understand it, the growing of hemp is, is, can be done by right now in Connecticut.
It's, well, it requires state licensing, so.
Need a permit.
You need, you need a permit from the state of Connecticut. Um, but in terms of Mansfield, it's a field crop, which is, if you get your state license, it'll allow, it is permitted um by right.
But we also ha- we also have some ability to regulate it.
I, I think that would be the discussion that you'd have to have, you know, as part of your, as part of future regulations, and that would be a question for the town attorney.
But if you're thinking about it in relation to uh, uh, an application before us, it, it won't count.
That's correct. It's a little bit like the scenic road. Okay. So um, is there a motion to uh close this hearing that we didn't spend much time talking?
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah, yes, I'm gonna share my screen, and it's not closing. Uh, it is adjourning.
Oh, that's right, it's not closing. It's, we're, it's adjourning. We're continuing.
A specific date, time, and place.
All right, I'll do it. Uh, this is Cooley, and I will move to adjourn the public hearing on the PZC initiated amendment to establish a temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishments, PZC file nine oh seven dash fifty-one to June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. The virtual meeting. Otherwise, the hearing will be held virtually, and information on how to join the virtual meeting will be included on the meeting agenda.
Plant seconds.
Move by Cooley, second by Plant. Uh, on favor. Oh, we gotta do a roll, we gotta do a roll, right?
Of coursey.
Hi.
Uh-huh.
Hi.
Cooley.
Hi.
Cotton.
Hi.
Plant. Hi. Ron.
Hi.
DeVivo.
Hi.
And Ward.
Hi.
Okay, so we got that one closed. Um.
So.
Do we have to, uh, do we have to receive these applications tonight?
That is your procedure, Mr. Chair. I will note for the record that I think we need to, to look at your bylaws and maybe change this. Um, just for the commission's um information, we have three new applications for you to receive this evening and schedule public hearings for. Uh, so what I'm, what I'm showing you on the screen is your um, public hearing schedule for the next few meetings. Um, so you, you know, we've got three hearings, um, none of which I expect to be long right now, scheduled for June twenty-first. Um, and I, in one wetlands hearing, and what I expect will be a rather lengthy presentation um on the Haven Communities Project, and then on July nineteenth, the bill is at Four Corners, has been continued. So we need to schedule all of these applications. Um, we are required to do so uh within sixty-five days. Um, my question for you, we also, you have the ability to schedule special meetings. Um. So I, the, I will say the one, the one I know, and we, I'd actually put a suggested date on, was the Amendment on Drive-Thru Services. They absolutely cannot be heard until the July nineteenth meeting uh because it's a mandatory referral. Um, so that, that's the earliest they can be heard, so that was the suggested. The scenic road application and the special permit for four eighty-three Stores Road. My question is, how do you want to handle those? Uh, in terms of dates, do you want to look at potentially scheduling a special meeting to, to deal with those quicker? Do you want to try and um, put them on one or the other evening, your regular meetings in July, or do you want to push them off until August?
Can we sprinkle them among future meetings?
Yeah. That's, that's why I did this matrix for you, to just say, okay, you know.
Let's carry that a few on each, uh, each day.
The reality is, you know, one of one of the issues is just going to be with the July sixth, July nineteenth. It's just going to be tough for us, uh, quite frankly. In the event that those, those hearings don't move forward, we're probably going to schedule these for something like seven PM, but then you may not actually start it until ten or eleven, depending on how long those presentations and hearings go.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can push them into August then.
So it, a- again, there, there's the option for the special meeting, and what, you know, what, normally you guys will set a hearing date on these. You know, one of the things you can do is simply say, we're receiving the application, and we will schedule a public hearing either at the next meeting, or we will um you know, have sta- or defer to staff and have staff schedule a special meeting and note it, or, or, or schedule the hearing and note it, notice it based on what's, you know.
Let's, let's. I would say let's defer to staff to set the, set the meeting date.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. So then I have three.
We can't, we can't receive them all at once, right? We gotta do them one by one?
You know, I, we haven't tried it that way, but I, you know, if you're deferring to staff on scheduling these hearings, um. we might be able to do something where if you give me a few minutes, I can throw that up. One thing I will note for the record is that all of your old business items were tabled. I think we forgot to note that. We just jumped immediately from public hearing to new business. So for the public's information, because none of the hearings are closed and we don't have other information, everything under old business was tabled this evening. All right. So you want to try and do this under one?
Yes.
All right. Trying to take you to put that together, we could go through these three in one minute.
Okay, all right. So then I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna change the language here, Vera.
Okay. I'll do the first one if you tell me what you want me to say.
All right. So can you do that? Can you see that, Vera?
No, I cannot. It looks like Chinese to me.
You can see it. I can do it.
I can read it.
You want me to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to receive the application of Scott Road Planning and Zoning Commission File 1010-10 to designate the portion of Brown's Road between Mansfield City Road and Chatham Drive as a scenic road, and to request that staff schedule a public hearing in accordance with statutory requirements.
Do you want to read the next one?
Corsi.
I'll second that one.
Okay, all right.
And let's just do a show of hands.
Oh, okay.
Okay, first one's done.
All right, now second one. New business, 1B. Move to receive the special permit application of Glisten Diamonds Plan and Zoning Commission File 1366-2, refer to staff in the Eastern Islands Health District for review and comment, and to request that staff schedule a public hearing in accordance with statutory requirements.
Move by Plant, second by Cooley. All in favor? Unanimous. One more to go.
One more to go.
I only see those two.
There it is.
I couldn't fit them all on one page. So while you start reading, I will.
See the application of Champagne Toy Store LLC to amend Articles 4, 7, 8, and 10 of zoning regulations related to drive-through facilities. Planning, zoning commission file 1374 to refer said application to staff, the town attorney, and regional planning agencies and adjacent communities as required, and to request that staff schedule a public hearing in accordance with statutory requirements.
Move by Plant.
Second by Ward.
Second by Ward. All in favor? That's unanimously.
All right. While we close, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it possible to limit the amount of time that people speak at public hearings?
Very good question.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too. You really should. So I think what we'll do is put amendments to your bylaws on a future agenda, and you can tackle that as well as how we handle receipt of new applications.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other questions?
So I would just, I would just note if anyone would like a field trip for any of the applications we received tonight, please let me know. We're not going to schedule that tonight. We're gonna let you guys go home, and I will also note that desegregate Connecticut, it looks like a bill was approved by both the House and the Senate. I don't think it has been signed by the governor yet. So once it has, we will, we will get that information to you in terms of the final version and what that means for us in terms of possible amendments to regulations to comply.
And that means we go to school, too.
Maybe going to school.
Okay, we are adjourned at 11:20.